Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to City Commission meeting, uh, conference meeting this, uh, February 6, 2024. My understanding is that the groundhog did not see his shadow. So, um, we will have fewer weeks of winter, although it doesn't feel that way. Um, anyway, uh, there are a number of, uh, items on today's, uh, today's conference agenda. And, um, I see we have, uh, a full commission here today, so that's good. Let us begin with communications. We have a communication from the, um, Board of Adjustment. And I understand that, uh, there have been some absences that, um, that hamper the ability of the Board of Adjustment to, uh, have a full meeting. So I guess we need to appoint an alternate. Has anybody signed up? Um, Mr. Clerk?
Yeah, we currently have three, uh, people that are signed up for Board of Adjustment or submitted an application.
Okay. Um, were any of them by recommendation from any of the members of this commission?
Um, not that I'm aware of. They just submitted through the system.
Okay.
And there, there's currently two alternate, uh, positions vacant.
Two alternates are vacant?
Yes.
And there are three people that applied for them?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So what would be the process then that we would make this selection? Cause I don't know who these people are.
So I can forward you their applications to take a look at them. I could send them to everybody and if...
And then maybe at the next meeting, we can, uh, we can, uh, make the decision. Cause these are, these are, these have to be by consensus appointments, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. So, um, all right. Why don't you send it to us this afternoon? And then before tonight's meeting, since that's when we do make appointments, maybe by then we'll, we can, we can determine the consensus amongst the members of the commission in order to make those selections. Okay?
Okay. I'll send them over.
All right. Very good. Okay. Uh, CF1, the audit of asphalt mills and resurfacing contract. Did that be Alan Dodd?
That'd be Pat Riley.
Oh, the auditor. Okay.
Patrick Rowley, City Auditor.
Yes.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor and Commissioners. The City Auditor's Office performed an audit of the asphalt mills and research, resurfacing contract. This audit was part of our annual audit plan. The audit objectives was to determine whether internal controls are effective when issuing contract work, accepting and validating services received in accordance with payment terms and conditions of the contract. Our scope and methodology consisted of the following. The audit covered the current asphalt mills and resurfacing contract with Eminem Asphalt Maintenance, Inc. That was a approved, uh, contract, uh, from the March 3rd, 2020 Commission meeting. It was a two-year contract with two additional, uh, extensions. At the completion of our audit, uh, over $4.5 million was paid out to the vendor under this contract. On page 17 of the audit report is a schedule detailing all the task orders paid to the vendor. Public Works Department issued the majority of the task orders, approximately $3.9 million. The audit program focused on execution of the contract and was broken down into three main areas: task orders, purchase orders, invoices, payments, funding source, and contract capacity. This audit was in, conducted in accordance with generally accepted government auditing standards. To summarize our audit conclusions, we found that overall, the city's internal controls are working effectively and the vendor complied with the contract terms, prices, and conditions. During the audit, we also identified opportunities for enhancement to the areas, in the areas of policies and procedures, standardization of supporting documentation for task orders, and contract capacity tracking. Our report details one finding and three observations. Finding number one, inconsistent task order approvals and supporting documentation by transportation and mobility. We noted inconsistent task order documentation such as, um, no purchase order numbers, uh, no budget showing the original budget and the budget, um, after the task orders were completed. Transportation and mobility task order routing form is less comprehensive than public works form. TAM's approves, TAM's approvals forms do not require any formal approval from the public works department. Also, no supporting documentation on why work is needed or how it was prioritized or budgeted. Overall, we concluded that the public works department has a much more robust approval process than transportation mobility, which includes written procedures, engineering inspector approvals, as well as supporting documentation in the form of maps, budgets, before and after, um, completion information on the task order. We provided our We provided our recommendation, which focused on Public Works Department and transportation and mobility, developing a formalized approval process to ensure that contracting department reviews and approves all the task orders. In addition, contract capacity, budget availability, and scope of work should be required as supporting documentation for all the task orders. Management concurred with our findings and observations and is implementing an action plan to address them. Currently, a lot of work is being performed under this type of construction work. The city has several vendors under, um, contract that are performing this type of asphalt paving, resurfacing type of work. This completes my audit presentation. I would like to thank Public Works Department, Transportation and Mobility, and Finance Department for assisting us with our audit. If there's any questions, I would be glad to address them at this time.
Can you please explain to the public what motivated this audit request, report from you?
Um, it was kind of a review of, um, each year we develop an audit plan, and we do, uh, as a city, spend a lot of money in the construction area now, and so we thought we would be taking a look at some, some of these kind of contracts, especially in, in the construction area. So we chose that as one of the projects that we, audits that we wanted to do this year.
Okay, very good. Uh, any questions?
I do, Mayor, thank you.
Please go ahead.
Thank you, and thank you to the department for the audit. I, I, I find these all very thorough, and I really appreciate reading them. Uh, one question on the finding, then, because I, you know, in reading what you had in the report, um, it's clear that TAM's form is less comprehensive, uh, and also does not require formal approval from Public Works. So is that going to change going forward?
Yeah, I think, uh, the intention was that they're going to get together so Public Works still takes a look at when other departments use this contract. Again, Public Works is the majority user of this contract, but TAMs and now, um, Parks and Recs, uh, use, will be using the contract. So they can provide a, a lot more, I think, guidance than, um, since they normally do this kind of stuff on a routine basis to help the other departments that, um, will be using, um, this contract with, with, through their own funding sources.
So is there actually a need to change the forms, or make them more consistent with each other between those two departments, or...
I, I think if, if the Public Works, um, document is, is adopted by the other org, uh, departments, that would be, uh, the, the best thing, because they have a pretty good extensive checklist and documentation of what occurred, what it looked like before, maps, budgets, and, um, the other, um, ones that we looked at, the other departments don't have it as extensive to, to really make it auditable and also clear of what, what occurred. And, uh, as far as, you know, budgets at the beginning and what the final outcome is, so it was, it's a lot more stringent and, uh, better, really better, um, processing through the Public Works Department.
Okay, so City Manager, will we be working to reconcile these differences, or bringing these forms more into line with each other?
Absolutely, and if you look at the report, uh, management did appreciate the audit. We reviewed it thoroughly with the City Auditor's Office, and we provided a response that we do concur with the findings, with the observations. We appreciate the continuous improvement, uh, capability, and, uh, certainly will heed to get those things done.
Okay, thank you. So that's for the findings. So on the three observations, um, Mr. Riley, you're satisfied with management's response on each of those three observations as well?
Yes, um, the, the amount that was different than the contract capacity in the third observation has, has been corrected. The, the second, um, observation is really more of just a recommendation, but at, at this time, Public Works has chosen not to, um, do anything with that item as far as going to an elect, um, uh, more of an online approval process, which is, which is fine, but, you know, it was just couldn't, it speed up the, the process that would lead to, um, processing it and sending it over to accounts payable for payment, but, um, that, that's just a management decision, it was just an observation that we made there.
So do you think that any of this, the, the three observations, the finding, also has spillover effect with other forms and other ways that we do business, or, um, is this something that's just because of what you did with the, uh, with this particular contract audit?
Well, I think anything where we can tighten up, um, procedures over, um, payments as far as making sure we can reconcile our purchase orders, our invoices, receipt of goods, and, and expedite, uh, all the documentation support it for any possible audit is, is a good thing in any department.
Okay, thank you, thanks, appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor.
Any further questions?
I have a couple, uh, simple things, and these are easy ones. Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Audit, Mr. Riley. Um, just, just for benefit of the public in general, how, um, how often, I mean, how are, do you choose the process, you choose what audits you are going to do? Just give us an idea, the process.
Well, um, I mean, this was really my first year to, to develop a, a full audit for the year. It, it, you know, depends, I mean, there's, we do a risk analysis, uh, we, we look at, of course, how much we're spending in that area, we, we look at, um, um, factors as to how long ago was something in this area audited? We look at, you know, probably five or ten categories to decide, and we, we score it and then determine which rise, what audits rise to the top that we want to, to try with, um, the number of, you know, personnel we have and time to, to be able to do it on an annual basis.
And the other simple que, I mean, just to start, how common is it to find discrepancies? Is it usually un, very unusual, in your opinion?
Um, well, it just depends, I mean, sometimes, um, we've run into some things that, um, procedural, procedure-wise, that there wasn't compliance with, with the procedures, or, or there's a, a policy that's not being followed, so we, that would trigger an audit, a finding type of, um, you know, notice, and then again, we, like, we have, in this case, three observations where there's just things that we see that are recommendations that, that from our experience and from what would be standard procedures for internal control that could be adopted is what we make as recommendations.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, any further questions?
Just a last comment, by the way, on, um, on the recommendation for your observation number two, just want to let you know I concur with management's position on that.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you so much, we appreciate it. Moving on to NP, Michael Ray. Michael?
Good afternoon.
Before I start, I give the clerks some exhibits that I would like each of you to receive.
You want to give them to the clerk? You have them? Okay. Before you begin, can you push the button in front of you so the mic works? Very good.
Try it again?
No, you're good, you're good, you're good. Just pull the mic to your, closer to you. Excellent, thank you.
I am a homeowner in the Palmer Lofts next to the FXE Airport, and I'm here for two reasons today. The first is to implore you to stop using leaded fuel at the airport. As far as September twenty-two, the FAA has approved unleaded fuel to be used at the airports. GAMIE G one hundred UL is authorized to be used in every general aviation spark ignition engine and every airframe powered by those engines. Why would you want to use unleaded fuel? First of all, there's no safe level of lead for children, according to the World Health Organization, the EPA, the CDC, the American Society for Pediatrics. Lead causes brain damage, cancer, heart issues, miscarriages, depression, hearing problems, bone damage, bone deterioration, anxiety, kidney, organ damage, delayed puberty, hearing problems, et cetera, et cetera. One study done at the Reed Hillview Airport in California, which is mentioned by your airport study on lead, uh, says that in that case, children that lived within a half a mile of the airport there had twenty-one percent more lead in their blood than children that lived a half a mile to a mile and a half away. Sure, as your study said, the lead dissipates, but that doesn't mean it disappears. It goes up to nine blocks away, and it lands on the plants, the water, the animals, the humans, and guess what? Even according to the EPA, it goes inside buildings. So do you want to poison your own workers at the airport that work for the city? Do you even know if they're being poisoned? Uh, what should we do about the children? Just let them die? I mean, we're not talking about a zoning variance here or a fence dispute, we're talking about a life and death matter, which is why as far as in August twenty-first, the Palmer Lofts submitted a resolution to this board that has been pretty much ignored and misrepresented ever since. For example, we've been told things like expect a reply within twenty-four to forty-eight hours. The mayor has asked the city manager to bring the matter forward. The airport is doing a study. The study is on the admissions analysis, will be before the commission the next day. But that study only recalculated the lead from two thousand twenty-two at the airport, and guess what? It found out that even three hundred pounds of lead more had been dropped in that year. But they didn't study the air and the lead at the airport now. So, you know, we're not a bunch of idiots. I know when the new commissioners came here, uh, at the end of last year, and a lot of our residents came and talked about the water plant, y'all told us that, yes, we need to be close, pay closer attention to listening to the residents. In fact, your mission stated online is to represent the public interest, promote quick and curious response to residents' problems. Frankly, I give you an F minus in this regard. You, you're sworn to protect us, that's why we voted and elected you to do that. Now, if you want to do a study on the lead, one of the exhibits I have there is from the chief data scientist that studied this in the Reed Hillville District, and you can do that study for three hundred thousand dollars, which is chump change considering how last year you gave away three hundred seventy-five grand to Elon Musk, the richest man in the world, to study a, a tunnel to the beach, which went nowhere. So to conclude, I would just implore you to do two things. Stop poisoning us at the airport. The fuel that's unleaded in the long run is cheaper, it's available, it's approved by the FAA, it requires less maintenance on planes, less downtime, less wear on the engines, so why in God's name would you not use it? Should we just let children die? Should animals and people be poisoned? No, it's madness. So I implore you to, to do the right thing and, and entertain our resolution that's been pending now for five and a half months and basically ignored by you. And if you're not going to do that, then quit, let someone else do it, because frankly, people I know that live in my community, we're worried sick, and maybe we are sick. Maybe the lead isn't that bad, but we have a right to know, and you have a duty to let us know, and if it's not, to protect us. I know this is a very, very big decision with lots of weighty consequences, but you cannot bury your head in the sand on this. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is Rufus here?
Yes, Rufus is here, and, uh, Mr. Mayor, I want to clarify something that was mentioned. For the public's, uh, um, knowledge, uh, we did not give three hundred seventy-five thousand dollars to the tunnel boring company study. Actually, that, that study was aborted, only about fifty thousand dollars were, um, spent on that.
Right, and, and the commission decided not to move forward on that at this time?
Correct, and so we, we stopped that, but Rufus is here to answer any questions about current status.
Before we get to that, though, so, Michael, I appreciate you bringing this to our attention, obviously, I've had these discussions with the HOA up there, but the only thing I will take exception to is that you've been ignored. That's not true. My office has reached out and responded many times. We have been in touch with the City Manager's Office, we've been in touch with Rufus. We have done a study at the airport, and we are currently doing another study, so, um, there could always be more that gets done, and I'm not taking away anything from the concerns you've expressed, but I don't want anybody walking away with the belief that we are ignoring you. We're not ignoring you, we are studying things, and it would be premature to implement a massive disruption to our airport operations prior to getting the data. You know, one of the things that I think is critical is we make decisions with data, and I've asked the City Manager to do that, even though the science tells us that the likelihood of there being lead in the soils in any of our adjacent neighborhoods is very low because the particulate matter doesn't spread that far. Uh, most of the particulate matter is generated during the run-up, which takes place on the airport property, but in an abundance, of course, and I've asked the City Manager and staff to test the soil in all the adjacent neighborhoods, including the church and the school across the street. So even though we don't believe that there is any danger in those areas, again, I think it's important for us to ensure we have the trust of the community by doing those studies. So that's the only thing, I just, I don't want anybody to think that we're ignoring this, this issue. It's a major concern, and we will move forward. So I'll let Rufus...
Do that in thirty seconds.
Uh, hang on, no, we, I want to let Rufus have an opportunity to, to engage.
Could I, um, could I ask a couple very specific questions?
Go ahead.
Okay, Rufus, thank you very much for coming up here.
Sure.
We were presented with a lead study a while back, and a couple of things I just want to, uh, just clarify for the, for the public. Number one is, um, lead is only used on the smaller planes. The majority of our planes, like the jet ones, the, the big jets, they all use unleaded, is that correct? I'm just trying to remember.
Yeah, so Rufus James, Airport Director, Grafton Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. Uh, so at the airport, we have what's called reciprocating, uh, engine aircraft that use the AvGas one hundred low lead, and the jet aircraft use Jet A fuel.
Which is unleaded?
The, it's not unleaded, it's Jet A fuel, it's a mixture of kerosene and diesel.
But the biggest ones of concern are the smaller planes, I think that's what you presented last time.
The smaller airplanes, which are propeller-driven, uh, they use the AvGas one hundred low lead.
Okay, what percentage of our, our takeoff landings are the smaller ones versus the larger ones? We, we tend to, I think you said, we happen to have a lot of larger planes, that's what sets us aside from other municipal airports, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct, and, uh, for, uh, reference, uh, if we use the fuel flowage that was pumped in two thousand twenty-three, um, of the thirteen or so million gallons that was, uh, pumped of fuel, uh, roughly about twelve million point two gallons was Jet A fuel. The remaining was AvGas, so less than a million gallons of AvGas was, uh, pumped.
Okay, in reference to something that my colleague, Mr. Commissioner Herbst had said, um, there was a study that was presented to us several months back, and it was the lead, uh, lead pollution from the airport, and when we dived into it, they, actually, they weren't measuring lead, they were measuring gasoline that was sold, and they were just extrapolating this is what the lead probably would be like. They didn't actually measure lead at that time, correct?
That is correct.
And I think from that meeting, uh, again, just piggybacking on what Mr. Herbst said, I think we had directed staff to actually measure lead, uh, the actual lead levels. Is that something that's ongoing at this time?
Yes, we have contracted with the city's vendor, uh, GHD, and, uh, they are preparing a task order to, uh, perform that, uh, study.
Okay, so we are taking this seriously, we are actually measuring lead. Now, the other question is, it's not the air, it's basically the lead that's going into the ground that's of a concern, it's not airborne, it's, it's that going into the ground, especially because our water plant is right, they were concerned about it going close to the new water treatment plant, but that's something that's going to be, that we're, we're looking into at this point, correct?
Yes, and I'm reluctant to say that it's not a case of, um, lead is actually going into the ground. Um, I can share with you that Naples Airport has done their study, and no lead was detected at the airport, and they even went into the neighborhoods, um, took samples off of roofs and so forth, and didn't find any lead that was related to AvGas one hundred low lead.
Okay, and one last question, I mean, obviously, all of us take this very, very seriously, lead, especially with children and neurological disease, is something exquisitely of concern. Uh, when, uh, give us a timeframe when we might have a result of that study. What do you think?
So once we get the task order back, um, go through the procurement process, sign off on it, uh, I would expect within the next three months to have results for the commission.
Rufus, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
I have thirty seconds.
Can you just wait? Can you just wait a second, Michael? We'll get to that. We'll just get to that. So Rufus, do you have any comments with regard to the statements made by Mr. Ray?
Well, a few things to understand. I realize his concern. We're certainly not just ignoring his concerns, but there are certain parameters that we have to remain within. For instance, we know that the FAA has said that the elimination of AvGas 100 low lead will be completed by 2030. So the process that they go through, EPA brought this to the forefront. And so after that, the EPA took a year to come up with their finding of there being an endangerment. And so now that requires the FAA to do their part, which is do the necessary testing that is required to determine how the engines on these aircraft will function. So airports aren't required to convert to unleaded fuel just because. And also the case of if they decide to do that and not provide AvGas to other users, then we're in violation of our grant assurances as an airport.
Do we have the authority to accelerate that timeframe? You know, you're saying 2030 is when it's supposed to be implemented. Does the city of Fort Lauderdale have the authority to accelerate the timeframe ahead of what the federal government is, has mandated?
And that's where I go back to again with the grant assurances. We can't accelerate that. It's the FAA's timeline. Similar to how the ban on stage two aircraft, which were very noisy aircraft, was done in 2016. That was a program the FAA put in place, and it took roughly about seven years to ban stage two aircraft throughout the country. And so today, I can honestly say that it has made a difference in the number of noise calls we get at the airport.
Okay. And to Commissioner Herbst's statement where the lead deposits tend to materialize over the runway as opposed to over the neighborhood, do you have any information on that?
I don't have information on that specifically. It's just what I have read in different articles and so forth. So to know for certain, I would rather depend on the environmental consultant that's going to be doing the work.
I believe that came actually out of the study. So I think that's where that information was, you know, where I observed that, you know, that observation was, I believe, from the study that we already have. Because I remember reading them talking about the run-up area and how that impacts it. But I'm reasonably confident that was the source of that, Mayor.
And one final question. We are continuing to study and analyze the area that's been in question here today. And that includes, I believe, a soil sample. So the process continues. We're still trying to examine whether or not there is any existing contamination. We've talked about, you know, future practices just now. But now, as far as past practices are concerned, are we, we are moving forward with a study to determine what the impact to the past practices has been on the area in question just past the runway. Is that correct?
So it's not going to be past the runway. Initially, it is, and this is a recommendation of the consultant, is to start on the airport. And as the Commissioner, Commissioner Herbst indicated, it's in those areas where those aircraft do their run-ups and do their takeoff. Because at those locations, they're at, I would say, 75% power setting, checking systems and so forth, as well as when they're departing at the end of the runway is where you'll get most of the emissions, if you will, occurring.
Okay. Anyone have any other questions of Rufus? Okay, thank you, Rufus. Michael, do you want to make a 30-second response? 30 seconds.
First of all, we are ignored. With all due respect, when you came to our harmonious meeting on November 8th, and you said that the city will be doing a study on the air, soil, and water at the airport and adjacent neighborhoods, you assured us that we would receive information on that within a week. It's in the minutes of our meeting, which is an exhibit that you have. And there's nothing to stop you. Excuse me, but 30 seconds are almost. And there's, it's in the minutes of our meeting, and in my follow-up email to you, which is also an exhibit. And there are airports already that have started using unleaded fuel, which you could do immediately. So why not stop poisoning us? Children, there is no safe level.
So, Michael, I need to correct that. I never said you'd have results within a week. There is nothing that government ever does.
I didn't say that.
I never said that.
And I didn't say what you said.
You said it's in the minutes of the meeting that I said that we would have results within a week. I've never.
You sent a notice of how the process is going to work within a week.
I, as I believe I said, that we were going to go back to our consultants, and that we would ask our consultants to expand the study. That is what we did.
And in my follow-up email, which is also in the, which you didn't add.
Well, I think, I think it's pretty clear that we find this to be a serious issue. The city is not ignoring it. And I do believe that we're continuing to try to find ways to work with the federal government, which has superior authority over this process than we do. That's also become clear today. And to the extent that we can try to minimize the impact of the spread of lead and other particulate matters that are, that are injurious to the health of people, you know, we're certainly going to look for ways to continue to do that. I know the study is working, working, going forward, working ahead. And, and I appreciate Commissioner Herbst being on top of this, and, and we're going to try to see something happen. I don't know if it's going to happen at the pace, Michael, that you think it can happen, but we're going to do our best to try to work with the FAA and the EPA to see what we can do to accelerate the process.
Yeah, and I'd just like to add, Mayor, again, we understand the concerns of the residents. But it's worth noting that, yes, there are the airports that have gone to unleaded fuel, but it's not a case where they're not providing AvGas. They're still providing AvGas 100 low lead to their operators. It's a very small handful, and maybe one hand, of aircraft owners that are using the unleaded fuel that's provided by those airports. Those airports that are providing the unleaded fuel, they own the fuel farm and the fuel trucks, and they operate as a fixed base operator. Unlike in our scenario, we have four fixed base operators that sell fuel to aircraft operators and so forth. So again, trying to enforce a change on those FBO operators does put us in violation of our grant assurances. Certainly, when the FAA says that unleaded fuel is the norm, and 100 low lead is no longer to be used, those FBO operators will have to comply with those FAA standards. But as of today, the FAA's concern is using unleaded fuel in every possible aircraft that exists, every reciprocating engine, it brings about safety concerns. They have to reach out to aircraft manufacturers as well on creating new engines that will accept the unleaded fuel. So it's, it's not a cut and dry, let's get rid of low lead and start pushing unleaded fuel. I can tell you that Naples Airport also took the action of eliminating the low lead from their facilities, and the FAA had to remind them of their role as a airport and what they're supposed to provide to the flying public. So what they did in turn was brought back the low lead, and for the one or two aircraft operators at the airport that use unleaded, they purchased a 5,000 gallon fuel tank or fuel truck. And that truck is used specifically for those, you know, three or four operators that use unleaded fuel. But the other airports in the state, there are three others, I believe, that are now offering low lead. But again, those airports own the fuel farm and sell fuel directly to the operators. That's not our scenario at FXC.
Okay. All right, thank you so much. We appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Mayor, last comment, if I may, because I can't let this go unaddressed. So, Michael, you emailed myself and my staff on December 4th. My assistant, Amanda, responded to you the next day, December 5th. So to say that we ignored you is frankly false. And I wish, and I wish you wouldn't do that. We responded to you. I did not misrepresent. The response was, we have shared with you all of the information we have regarding lead testing at this time. We will continue to share new information as we receive it. As you've just heard, we are continuing to do studies. We have no additional information to share with you. So to imply that we have ignored you or did not respond, that I did not respond to your email of December 4th, is factually incorrect. We responded on December 5th.
I didn't say you didn't respond.
Okay. We, it's, the presentation is concluded, and I encourage you to continue to work with the commissioner outside the meeting to try to see this process forward.
Mr. Mayor, just so we, as a summary, I think this consensus from our commission is whatever you could do to expedite it, we would, you know, we, as a commission, I think that we would like to expedite transitioning to unlead as quick as we can. Is that a fair statement, Mr. Mayor?
That's what I've asked.
I think it's a fair statement, a fair request.
And that's what I've requested of the consultant, to get it done as quickly as possible.
Thank you very much.
Excellent, thank you. Okay, moving on to business one. La Sola's parking garage facade lighting update. I believe at the last commission meeting, we had asked staff to let the commission know if there are any alternatives, any other vendors out there. And Mr. Rogers, what have you found out for us?
Good afternoon, Mayor. Commissioner Ben Rogers, Director of Transition Mobility. I feel like I'm looking the wrong way, Mayor. There we go. If you could fire up the presentation.
Just look it up.
So you're correct, Mayor. Back in November, we came to the commission and gave an update on the status of the garage facade lights. At the time, we really outlined five different opportunities or next steps with the existing product. And you can see them on the screen, options A through E, from a no cost up to $2.1 million. And at that time, the commission challenged staff to go find out if there's other products in the market, and specifically the Hard Rock Guitar, what product was on that and what that might look or feel like here at the La Sola's Garage. And so today, we're going to just give a quick overview of what those findings are and talk about potential next steps. So the first one is the product the Hard Rock uses is from Seiko Technologies. They've been around for over 30 years, and you can see from this slide, they've got a lot of history and iconic deployments and buildings and structures from, from the last 25 years.
So I know you weren't around here then, but why didn't we use them? If they've been around for 30 years.
I can say I was not here then.
Yeah. It's a cheap escape.
On this specifically, there's four examples I'm going to highlight. The Hard Rock Guitar, which I think everyone is familiar with. It's a 450-foot structure, and there's over 7,000 of these light devices called V-Stick on it. And one of the reasons it was selected was based on the versatility, durability, and the ability to withstand the extreme weather conditions here in South Florida. Next to that is the TQL Stadium, which is an MLS soccer stadium, 26,000-seat venue that opened in 2021. Over, almost 15,000 linear feet of lights installed on that structure. The Burj Khalifa, which is the tallest building in the world, standing at 2,717 feet. If you compare that with the tallest building in the United States at 1,776 feet, it's a, it's a absolutely huge structure with lighting of over 17 miles of these V-Stick devices on it. But one thing I thought was very interesting is that there's only one video processor for that entire building. It all comes back to one control processor for those lights.
Where's the T, the TQL Stadium?
TQL is in Cincinnati.
Cincinnati, okay.
Yep. And then I think everyone is familiar with the sphere. Seiko Technologies is the one who implemented the sphere. It's a different product than what we're recommending for, what they're recommending for the garage, but it does use the same processing and the same communication devices. And one note, again, different product, but it has a high resolution of 120 times that of a standard HDTV. So that's some of their deployments, where they're at. What they've identified to us is the V-Stick. And on this slide, you can see kind of the examples, the V-Stick column versus the DOTX3L. The DOTXL3 is what we currently have deployed on the garage. You can see it's, it's kind of like a individual LED light. And then the, the V-Stick on the left side is more of a rope or a strand that has multiple LEDs. And you can see there on the comparison that the, the product output, the color resolution, the angles, all of that are substantially greater on the V-Stick than what we currently have. And so, Mayor, what I want to do real quick, if IT can throw up, there is actually a video that they have on their website for the TQL Stadium. The reason we're showing this application is that the framework of the TQL Stadium is similar to the garage. It's got a bunch of rib structure devices. You can see the standalone lines. But you can see the, the quality of the product, and it ranges from just lighting patterns. You'll see word choices on it here in a second. You'll see some, some animations related to the soccer venue. I promise it's coming. You know, we've, we've got a lot of requests over the years of what, what can we do with our lights now? Can we, can we do certain themes for certain events and certain causes? And I think that that video showed the magnitude of the capabilities to, to deliver that type of experience. So we reached out to Seiko. They came to Fort Lauderdale. They did a review of our garage to see the applicability, to see if their lights could adhere to the structure and the architecture of the garage fens. They confirmed that all of it can. We had some kind of preliminary discussions about what the next steps would look like. And before I get into that, I would do want to pause and say that we've had a conversation with our procurement department, and that this is something that would not be deemed a sole source product. This is something that we'd have to go out to the market and do a solicitation for. And so why we highlighted this product today, it's because you asked for information about the Hard Rock Casino, and this is the product they use. But we would need to go out and do a procurement if we were going to look into replacing the lighting on the garage. So what this shows is it's about a $3 million cost for the specific product that we just showed. Again, that's high-level ballpark cost. We'd have to do a scope of work to get a defined actual cost estimate with this product. And it's about $2 million for the actual lighting and $1 million for installation. One of the challenges, Mayor, for the installation is that they also have to take these lights down. So it's not just an installation, put it up. They've actually got to take the old system off, which adds a lot of labor to the installation cost.
So would they be using the same infrastructure?
Yeah, they'd still be using the, the fens, but they'd have to remove the, the current light strands so they can put theirs up.
A million dollars to put it up?
Yeah, the installation to take down and to put up would be.
A million dollars just for, for putting it up?
Yeah. And again, I want to continue to preface this, this is a high-level conversation. This is not a detailed scope with, with cost estimates. It has not been bid.
Okay, so when you say take it down, do you mean just the lighting portion or the, or the, the?
The side?
No, no, no. The?
Just, just the lighting portion, not the ribs, not the, not the steel, just the lighting.
Just the lighting portion.
Yeah. But the way they're installed, you have to have multiple lifts, multiple labors out there taking.
I understand. I'm just thinking, if you had to take the whole, the whole thing down, then we could also address another issue on there, but we, we're not doing that. Okay.
Yeah, so, you know, I put together a quick timeline. If we were going to do a procurement action, I think that there's probably two different scopes that we're looking on. One is the product for the lights, and one is for the installation, because most of the lighting manufacturers defer to a local electrician to install. But that's something we need to do a little more homework on. But we, we have a six- and nine-month process for staff to build that scope, put it out on a solicitation, come to commission, get an award, and then have the contract executed. The, the vendor has indicated that it would take four to six-month lead time for those, for that product to be here. And then you can see it's two to three months for the installation.
Ben, a question for you. So one of the problems we had with the original lighting, besides, you know, it's just, it's failure, was also that it was obsolete by the time we installed it. So what guarantees do we have that this is not going to be technologically obsolete within the next five years? And we're going to have to be doing this again?
I think that's a great question. It's something that we're going to have to develop in the scope, is to put in warranties and remedies and identify how, how long this would be for also. You know, I think as we talked before, the, you have the product component versus the software component. So I think that we need to be in a posture that there'll be some software upgrades continually over time, and that, you know, every three, four years that we'll be investing in the product.
With our existing technology, is it, is it the hardware that's obsolete? Is it the software that's obsolete? Is it both?
So right now, it's, it's both. The software is not the most current version, and what I've been told is for the product, the newer product, to communicate with the older product, there needs to be software updates.
So irrespective of the warranty for ongoing software updates, we may still wind up with hardware that will no longer communicate with the new software. So if I'm running around with an old iPhone, it doesn't communicate with Apple's current operating system. So it doesn't matter whether my phone works or not, it won't communicate.
Understand the concern. I don't, I don't, I can't respond to that. That's something we would learn through the competitive process.
Unfortunately, that's one of the problems with technology, is that, you know, static hardware doesn't keep up with software. I've got probably a half dozen laptops sitting around in my, in my office that are. I've got probably a half dozen laptops sitting around in my, in my office that are functionally obsolete, not because there's anything wrong with them, but they simply won't communicate.
Yeah, and Commissioner, we'll do a little more homework on our side. I mean, obviously, if they installed it on the world's tallest building, there has to be some kind of hardware plan or thought pattern behind it, but we'll look into it.
Well, one of the things that I've noticed, based on my time both in the private sector and the public sector, is that the private sector invests in ongoing renewal and replacement of their technology. Public sector does not. That's why our buildings fall down, it's why our technology becomes obsolete, it's we don't invest in the ongoing upgrades that are necessary to maintain us at a world-class level. Private sector does, because they've got a profit motive.
And I have a response.
Yeah, go ahead.
In regards to this type of investment, my concerns or my question is regarding waterproofing the environment, where our bridges, the lighting that we're considering. The examples that have been given by this particular company, are any of those buildings located near the ocean, where they are constantly exposed to salt water or the weather from the water itself?
Yes, I think I can do one better than "near." They indicated that they have deployments on cruise ships that travel the ocean, you know, daily. So they have some marine exposure, obviously, salt in the air, they have the Hard Rock here, and then they did reference that they have a few oceanfront deployments. So we can give you that granular information if you, if you need it.
Yes, go ahead, Dr. Charlin.
I mean, this is like, like, mind-blowing, it's a light bulb. It's like a joke, like, how many city employees does it take to change a light bulb, you know? Apparently, a million dollars worth. You're talking about software upgrade. It's not like communication, it's not like tracking, it's not like, you know, counting vehicles, it's an on-off switch for a light bulb. Why, I'm trying, why would you need to upgrade software on a regular basis just to turn the lights on and off? I mean, I know there's graphics, but you needed, are we gonna have to change the graphics the latest, I mean, why would you have to change and upgrade software on that?
Yeah, I mean, I think I'd refer to Commissioner Herb's comment about the evolution of an iPhone, right? So it's technology, it's video-based, it's got programming in it, and so as they advance the technologies, the software changes. But I'd have to get, again, we'd have to, we'd have to develop that into the scope and get you a specific answer from these vendors.
Oh, no, but here's, here's the thing, go back to what Commissioner Herb said, no, the computer still works. If you don't want to connect it to the internet, you could still use it as a word processor, you could still do a spreadsheet, you could turn it on, you could do math, and without upgrades, it will still work perfectly well, it just might not be able to communicate on the web, or if you can do Bluetooth, or internet, whatever, it's still, does it have to be upgraded? It'll still work.
So my understanding, and again, I can get this reconfirmed, is that the current lights that are out there, we have to buy the new product to replace the ones that are not working, and the new product doesn't directly correlate with the existing software. And so the recommendation is, if you're gonna bring these new products in, we should also upgrade the software at the same time.
And if I may, the installed, original components, they're obsolete, correct?
That's correct.
And because they're obsolete, when you bring in the new components, like you mentioned, the software doesn't connect accurately, correct? And there are glitches then with the graphics that are trying to be displayed on the screen.
Let me ask you another question, if I may, and this we brought up in conference, Greg. That's a lot of money. I mean, that's, $3 million, to me, is an awful lot of money. And one of the things that was mentioned by the attorney was, you know, we could, it's not, we're spending it, we're just loaning it, we're gonna be getting it back with the lawsuit, but there's no guarantee we're gonna win. And number two, even if we do win, there's court costs, attorney costs and whatnot, there's no, it's a risk, it's a gamble, number one. And number two is, have we, and I mentioned this to you, Tom, at the meeting, I don't know if you've researched it, any way that we could have private sector offset the cost? Sponsorships, or, I don't know, advertising, but like, naming rights, or something on there where, you know, on the ongoing-
You wanna buy an ad on there?
Well, no, you could, but no, a way to, you know, Hard Rock, whatever, anything we could do, you know, when we had Circuit, you know, one of the things that offsets that is they have advertising on the Circuit to offset the costs, or operating costs of maintenance, and is there any opportunity for private sector to offset the cost of lighting?
We would have to look into that, but I warn you, if I may, that when you, we have fought the billboard companies for what is called off-premise advertising, that's what that would be tantamount to, and that could cause a lot of problems for our sign codes. So initially, the answer is no, but it doesn't mean I wouldn't take a chance to look into it, to find a way.
Okay, it's opposed to actual advertising. I know that in the Hall of Fame, there is naming rights, has been mentioned a few times in there. How about just something as simple as naming rights?
Where would they, where would the name, how would you place the name?
Somewhere on the, you know, you have a $3 million computer with lights, you could just put the name on there, on the light there somehow.
Well, let me make this suggestion. I don't think the Commission is really prepared to go forward on this, I think we're just bouncing around ideas right now. I think we, before we make a decision, I know I can't make a decision on this today, I first want to know, number one, what the outcome of our lawsuit would be, and how much money we'd be able to realize from that. And once we do get a net number, as the Commissioner says, we will have a better understanding. But furthermore, is it not true that there's still, this was a CRA project, and is there not still money available within the CRA to be able to apply towards something like this?
That's my understanding. I would defer to the City Manager for a response.
Yes, there is, there's about a million dollars plus, and right now, we are putting together a request to see how we can retro-extend the CRA, so that we can have that money available for expenditures, but it would certainly need to be reallocated as those fundings were committed for projects that were completed. So you all, as policymakers, would have to do that via vote.
Okay, so, so there are possible other funding sources, so before we, I mean, it's, am I correct in assuming this is the consensus of the Commission to, like, let's put this on pause, we appreciate the research-
No, that's not my consensus.
Okay.
I'd like to speak, if that's possible.
Okay, before you speak, okay, go ahead and speak, because I still have Bill Brown there.
No, thank you.
Okay, I'm just trying to get a sense of the Commission.
No, thank you. So as the District Commissioner for this site, I've been talking to a lot of the neighbors and a lot of people in the district. This is a very iconic building that was built with both CRA money and parking money, correct, Ben?
That's correct.
Yes, so part of the promise to the neighborhood and to the city at the time was that they would have a garage on this site that was also pretty much a piece of public art. This was because of the lighting. For those of you that might not remember, we were able at one time to do really, really nice things during the holidays, July 4th, fly the flag in a, in a beautiful tribute to the country. When Russia invaded Ukraine, I think we lit the garage in the colors of the Ukrainian flag. We've done things like that all along. The neighbors really want this garage to function the way it was promised to them when this building was built. Now, this is all very preliminary, and you're right, Mayor, there is about a million dollars. This is an improved CRA project, so that's an avenue. I've also been discussing this with others in the neighborhood. What folks have to remember, and please, we're asking you to be considerate of the district here, I can't imagine that in any other district in the city of Fort Lauderdale, if something broke, we would just say, eh, no need to take any action, or we're just gonna let this slide, or like, it's okay, we, there's no rush here. But we have to move forward, we have to figure out a way to do this, because you have to also remember that the residents in District Two, particularly the beach, are donors to this city's coffers. I would imagine that the beach puts in a lot more money than comes back out. So you have to be cognizant of the taxpayers in our district who saw this project through, supported this project the way it was done. That's really, really, really important. I had someone, someone say to me just the other day, well, gee, why did we have to fix that sinkhole at Bayview and Commercial? Just leave the hole there and let people drive around the hole. Would we ever think of doing something like that? No. Great cities repair things, that's my point. It's, that might be an exaggeration, Vice Mayor, I see your distress, but that, that's the point. The point is, we do not leave things broken, we just don't. That's not the kind of city that we are. And as a project that was approved and funded, I have lots of questions. Where was the warranty, Ben, on this project? The lights have never really worked well, I would say, almost since day one. It's always been an issue. So again, I'm sure some of this will be part of that lawsuit that we approved in November. I mean, we hired outside counsel in November, right? We hired outside counsel, hopefully they're working on it, but were there any warranties with regards to the lighting, and also, and also the screening?
Yeah, and part of the presentation today, after we get done with this portion, is outside counsel's actually here today to introduce himself and give you a little outline on their timeframe for their review.
Okay, so were there, though, warranties on the lighting and the screening, which is a whole nother issue besides, but were there?
Why don't we let their counsel talk about it?
Okay. Okay. I also wanted to just ask, so I did look at the potential next steps on page seven of eight. Is that pretty typical, that we would actually be looking at 12 to 18 months for the timeline in terms of scope, procurement, award, all the way to installation? It would be anywhere from a year to a year and a half?
Yeah, I mean, I think the first portion is really our control, right? The six to nine months on the procurement, the scope, the commission award and execution. I think there's a little bit of time in there to make sure that things like summer recess and, and time periods are taken into consideration, fiscal year-end, things like that. But yeah, I think that this is pretty realistic, that you're probably looking at 18 months before a remedy would happen if we go through the standard process.
Okay. You know, so again, I just want to reiterate, Mayor, that I don't think that the residents want to see this just get, you know, delayed and postponed, but if we're still looking down the path of a lawsuit, it doesn't mean that we still can't also be parallel track of looking at what we need to do to put this out to bid, to see what's out there. Again, we just saw one very high-end, you know, possibility, but I think that we just can't let it just lie around. Government works slow enough as it is, and I don't want to see this take a pause at all. I would like to also see us maybe talk to the Beach Business Improvement District, which I think, knowing those hoteliers and other businesses on the beach, they also would be very interested in seeing this garage function the way it was designed. Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
With the comments my colleague has just shared with us, I'm hearing that this iconic garage, the lights, is having a impact on the financial improvement or upgrade of the area? Is that what I'm hearing?
No.
Because, because what I'm hearing, that's what I'm thinking I'm hearing, that's what I'm interpreting.
I'm just saying-
Because what, let-
Okay, I'm sorry.
Give me one moment, if I can clearly say this. Because, understanding that the bridge was built, the idea was to have these lights be a part of the artwork you use, the term that you use, how much did we originally pay for the bridge and the lights? What was the original cost?
When you say the bridge, do you mean the garage?
I mean, parking garage, excuse me, the parking garage.
What was the exact total, Ben? Seven or eight million, or something?
For the garage, the lighting, the whole project was almost 40 million, I want to say it was in the high 30s. I'd have to get, I'd have to go back and look at the-
It was 33 million, I thought 33 million is the number.
How much from parking, and how much from CRA? Do you know the breakdown?
I want to say, and Linda Short might be better at this, but I want to say that the parking fund paid somewhere around 13 million, and the CRA paid the remainder.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, the reason I ask this, we have something that is not working. Whatever the reason was, is it the software, the warranty, and how do we fix this if we put $40 million in it? Do we need to consider a different way to beautify this particular parking garage? Maybe the lights is not the best fit, and the dollar amount that we are preparing to pour into this again, I'm not sure if I'm comfortable with that. Because $40 million, whether it be parking money or CRA money, that's significant. And if we could do something where it's not gonna cost us as much to continue to allow this structure to be iconic, does the lights make it iconic, or is it the presentation that we could give, other than lights?
Well, I think, again, this is just my personal opinion, but when this project was sold to the neighborhood, and trust me, this was a contentious issue back in the day. I think, I think, Mayor, when you were the District Commissioner, you got a lot of flack for supporting the lights on this, on this building, if I remember correctly.
Well, back then, there was a debate as to whether or not to even build a parking garage there, because it was the entry feature of coming onto the beach from the La Solas Bridge. So in order to justify putting a parking garage there, the EDSA, who designed the project, proposed wrapping the parking garage in something that was decorative and that would be inviting and exciting, and the solution was to wrap it with this lighting design. I believe the lighting design cost $3 million originally, and so when they start talking about 40 million or 30 million, most of that went to the construction of the garage. And so, yes, that was a promise that was made, we weren't just gonna build a parking garage and leave it exposed like they did at, in Oakland Park. As many of you can see, at the corner of US 1 and Oakland Park Boulevard, there's a, I think, a nine-story parking garage, and all the levels are completely exposed with neon lights, excuse me, with fluorescent lights, and it's a jarring appearance, it doesn't, it's, it's something we didn't want on the beach. So yes, to your point, that was part of the package that was made, that we would have it wrapped in some sort of decorative feature, and this was the one that was selected.
Right, and moving forward, to your point, Vice Mayor, I, whether it's lighting or something, we still have to figure out how we move forward, because this is, again, a procurement process. You're saying we can't do a no-bid, we can't do a sole source, we have to do a procurement process. So, you know, that, to me, the first decision is, do we want to see this building function the way it was meant to function? Because if that, if the answer is yes to that, then at some point in time, you do have to put it out to bid. We don't know what we're gonna get, we don't know what companies are going to respond to, I guess it would be an RFP, is that what we would be talking about? We don't know who would respond to that, we don't know what the numbers are, this is all very general information with just sort of guesstimates based on, you know, other projects and this just one company.
Right.
So we don't know, we just don't know. But what I'm saying is, I think it would be very important to, to the neighborhood, to the city, because that garage did get a lot of attention, not just from District Two and the beach, but throughout the city. Because I've had numerous people tell me from out the city, when things weren't working the way they should have, what's going on with the lights? Why is this just not functioning? So to me, we have to make it right, that's all. I don't know what the cost is going to be, but we did just hear that there's a million dollars left in the CRA, which is, that's a good thing, because that CRA has sunset, the beach CRA has sunset, the last project is the A1A Streetscape Project, which is just about completed now, except for some punch list items and some bollards on the west side of A1A. So there's no way that we're going to use that million dollars, so we need to find out if it is available to us. That's a big dent in that money, because again, remember, this was a CRA project. So basically, that's how I feel, and I think I'm representing what I'm hearing from folks in the district on this particular item.
Okay, so do we have our counsel here?
Yeah.
Okay.
While we're waiting on that, Mayor, two quick comments.
Oh, sure.
I, with respect to spending the CRA money, go back and revisit that, because I don't believe you can spend CRA money for repairs, you can do it for new construction projects, but I don't believe you can use it for repair and maintenance activities.
Well, I guess we have to define whether or not we're installing new stuff?
Well, no, we're replacing something that's there, so it would not constitute a new project. So this is, this is ongoing repair and renewal, so take a look at that, and just make sure that's a legitimate expenditure of CRA funds. But I also need to comment too, on Commissioner Glassman's statement, that the beach donates significant amount of money to the city. The fact is, having had the CRA in place for 25 years means that all of the growth in the property values at the beach never came to the city, they all stayed at the beach. So at some point, hopefully in the future, they will be a donor to the rest of the city, but for the last 25 years, they have not been.
Well, I, if you want to argue that the beach is not an economic engine for the city, I'll do that debate every, every single day. Thank you.
All right, that's not this hot topic today.
That's okay.
All right.
So much for Mayor, back in November- So, Mr. Mayor, back in November, you awarded or approved an agreement with Kelly Cronenberry, and today with us is Gary Brown. He's going to make his way up here. But just as a sneak peek, we have done some site visits, we've had some initial meetings, we've talked through some of the documents, and he's here to talk to you a little bit about his, his, his position on it and what the next steps are.
Very good, thank you so much. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioner. Yes, I was retained. So, a little bit about me, just briefly. I'm a partner, Kelly Cronenberry, and chair of the firm's construction law department. I actually know the city attorney from years back when he was with Dania Beach. We worked on a number of construction matters, construction defect matters. So, Tom reached out to me and kind of let me know about the issues with the garage and tasked me with investigating whether or not there was a possibility to go after those involved in the design and construction of the garage, to see if there could be some redress to the city of Fort Lauderdale for the issues that have occurred and the likely expenditures that will have to be made to make modifications or repairs to that. That investigation is still early on. I did have a chance to go out and meet with staff in November to look at the garage. I've had several phone calls and Zoom meetings with staff, including Ben. I've had conversations with Tom Green, who was a former employee of the city, no longer, but he, he was happy to provide his assistance, being the project manager at the time for the city. And so, I've been trying to work with him, Brian Green of the city, to get documentation. I only have very little documentation with regard to the wire mesh, mesh issues. And so, I've asked staff to provide me with certain records that are typical for projects like this, so that I can review them and then form some preliminary opinions about potential parties to go after and, and potential theories and the likelihood of recovering that and potentially insurance monies that may be available to pursue those claims. I'm not in a position to do that right now, because I'm still investigating. As far as timeframe, I would hope by next month's commission meeting that I would be in a position to provide some preliminary feedback on, again, likely who might be the, the target of such a claim, whether it be the, you know, the construction folks or the design folks, or both, and under what, you know, potential theories and what remedies might be available to pursue those theories.
That's a little confusing, Tom. This is certainly before you started working with us, but we were under the impression that the city had already initiated legal proceedings against the manufacturer of this product. So, we're now hearing, we're starting at first base already?
There, there was a law firm that had, Dwayne, is this Vaughn? Okay. There was a law firm that had begun to do some work and has not taken it to completion.
Well, we understand that, but all the stuff that he's speaking of looks as though we're not benefiting from any of the work that they had done.
I don't, I don't think they got any significant work done is the problem there.
So, we've been sitting on this for all this time?
Before my time, I can't tell you what happened.
Oh, I understand that.
But the other lawyer.
Dwayne, do you have any information that you can provide to us? Do you know what they were doing or who they were, what, why was, why it sounds like we're just starting from scratch here? Do you have any information on that?
Sorry, Mayor, I do not. I also adopted the lawsuit and at the direction of both you and the district commissioner. I followed up with the outside counsel, saw that significant work has not been done, and, and that's why we've moved the case to another outside counsel.
Okay.
Mayor, and I will tell you that I have brought this subject up repeatedly with all of my meetings with staff over the last year, and I, it's very frustrating, because I don't know what happened with that firm either. So, it is frustrating. No idea, but I do think this ball was dropped, and I'm just saying it's time to pick the ball up again and get going on this.
Okay.
Understanding that this has some history that predates me and.
Apparently, there's no history.
I, I will expeditiously conduct my review when I get the records and, and hopefully be in a position to make those recommendations by next month's commission meeting. But I understand the urgency, and I will do my best to expedite that process.
Right, this is a front burner item for the city, so whatever you can do to assist us in this, I think that's why we're engaging you. So, we appreciate your work, and if you can get back to us with a status report, we'd appreciate that.
Yes, and, and thank you, and thank you for the opportunity.
What I'm also concerned is, have these suppliers and vendors been put on notice within the warranty period to not compromise our claim and to put us at risk for not being able to make a claim on our warranties? So, please get back to us on that, too.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Um, thank you.
Anyone have any questions of, of the attorney?
Not from the attorney, but if Ben could come up, I, I wouldn't mind.
Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you very much. My two colleagues, Mr. Glassman and Ms. Beasley Pittman, actually, I think both bring up very valid points, you know. No, no, on the one hand, you know, they, you wouldn't let a pothole go and fix, but the same token, a pothole is not art. Three million dollars in art is another story, but, you know, art is important, you know, like, I'm getting history from the mayor that, I guess this was sold to the community, ensuring that there would be a facade there. So, maybe we can do something to start moving forward while we're waiting on the legal proceedings. But the same token, Ms. Beasley Pittman brought up what I think might be a very good thought that I didn't even think about. Does it have to be lights? Is it, now that we're reimagining it, maybe we could think of something other than lights to put there that might be a better fit? And if so, Mr. Herbst, maybe that does qualify for CRA money if it is considered a new thing? Is it something we could consider?
Yeah, I think from a staff perspective, that's what, the kind of feedback we want to hear from the commission is if we want to pursue replacing the existing lights with a different product and go out to the market, if there's a different mindset or idea of what that might be, and then we can go do our homework and come back to the commission.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions of Mr. Rogers?
Mr. Mayor?
Who's, who's?
It's me, Greg.
So, if I'm just hearing it correctly, because we want to make sure we, we follow your direction from the commission, you want us to get some community feedback via the bid, right? Is that what I heard?
I think, I think what Commissioner Sturman, excuse me, what Commissioner Glassman said has significant merit in the sense of, you know, maybe we should put out an RFP to determine in real numbers what we're looking at, you know, going forward on this particular design, and at the same time, do an analysis of what the available monies are. But I do, I don't want to put out there with an RFP, say, we have X number of dollars to spend on this, you know, what can you come up with? You know, every time we tell the world how much we have to spend, they always come back with that plus 50%, you know? So, that doesn't work for us. So, I mean, I think that it, there's merit to that, and I think that it's not a big, it's not a big cost on our, on our side. It would certainly save time and give us opportunities to weigh options. And if we decide as a commission that that's not the path we want to follow, we could take up what the Vice Mayor said, and let's see what other designs there might be. And, and, and so, at that point, I think we'll have a better opportunity to make a decision. All right, thank you. Mr. Brown, did you want to speak?
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the commission. First of all, Mayor and Commissioner Glassman, I, we agree, Bill Brown, President of Central Beach Lines, when this was presented to the residents back when it was proposed to be built, it was going to be an icon. It was coming across the bridge. I ask that everyone keep this in mind as we keep moving forward and thinking outside the box on how we're going to address it. This is just one jewel in the crown of that whole area. Look where we're at today. If you recall, doing nothing was not an option with BMR in that asphalt parking lot. I think everyone on this commission would agree that if we had just sat there for 44 years, look where, where we're at. So, keep that in mind. However, it's a concrete structure, so the residents, I don't think, would be happy to see something just painted on those concrete. The other thing is, when you look at three mil, or $3 million, you know, no manufacturer is going to come out and give his lowest price when he's asked. He's only going to highball it, okay? Because he doesn't want to give up at the competitive edge. So, I think that 3 million is a high number as we move forward. So, I would ask that you don't get wrapped around that 3 million, because if you recall when the tunnel was first proposed, Mayor, look how high that number was, and look where the number's at today.
We're about to see what that number is today.
Thank you. And, and so, it, it's just not the residents that get to enjoy it. It's all the tourists that ride up and down the water taxi. It's the five-star hotel guests that come from around the world that walk down to that area and get to see it lit up, you know? It, it would, when it was properly functioned, we did all the holidays. I can remember Valentine's Day, we could do Super Bowl colors, even the opportunity to do some type of color lighting, lighting for Black History Month with the, the Black History colors. There has so many options that you could use that for in the future. I, I encourage you that we just keep moving forward, we parallel. I was really taken back when I heard that, here we are, over a year later, nothing has legally been done, and we kept being assured that you were going after the manufacturer. And I'm really, Mayor, you brought an excellent point. I hope we haven't lost the advantage of putting them on notice of any potential claim or lawsuit. So, please, let's parallel this project, let's fix it, let's come up with how we're going to fix it, but at the same time, but to keep pushing to get the legal aspect so we can come up with alternative funding. And when this was presented last November about options, the, the committee was somewhat mixed, because they didn't have all the facts. But the funding for this comes out of the parking fund. It's not the ad valorem tax dollars raised by the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Let us move on to business two, the New River Crossing update, part four. This is city manager.
Yes, so, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Commissioners, we invited today our vendors to provide the latest update. We've had great success with having discussions with more stakeholders. We appreciate also the county's partnership. We received certain feedback from the county, and we're also following up on those concerns as well. BDO is here today to give the latest update and also here to answer any questions you may have.
Great, thank you. This is Ben Day today, you see.
Yeah, so before BDO comes up, I just wanted to kind of set the table, Mayor. You know, BDO's got a scope that they're working on. This is a, a high-impact project with a lot of, a lot of headlines and a lot of talk in the community. And so, one of the things that I've tasked them to do is make sure that they come to the commission on a regular basis and share what might be small updates, but continual updates on where we're at and, and talk through that project. I, I think that the deliverable is still a few weeks out, but again, we don't want to lose face-to-face contact between you and BDO to be able to address any concerns and feedback that you have as they navigate through the process. So, today's just an update of where they've been in the last 45 days, where they're at now, a couple of recommendations, and then the next steps.
Excellent, thank you. Who will be speaking first?
Thank you so much. Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Commissioners, thank you so much for giving us the opportunity. I think if I can go to the first slide. Just wanted to give you an update on the project, where we stand today. There are various different works teams that we have been working, and areas are under significant progress. We've been working diligently with the large resources now deployed on different work streams. Like, we have a dedicated team looking at cost estimations. We have a real estate team looking at properties, impacts on any New River crossings, options. And then we have our team, also different teams, working on different funding opportunities as well. Just to share with you very briefly and quickly, we've had various different stakeholder engagements, which have been very valuable, fruitful, and we are very grateful to Commissioner Sturman as well for facilitating a combined meeting where the county was there, FDOT was there as well, and MPO also joined that meeting. We've received, been receiving valuable input. However, that, our initial scope, which, where we started off with a very conceptual design, which is typically 1% to 3% of the total project, is now expanding as a result of those added on and require some advanced engineering. I will share those different queries that we have been working on as well in the next few slides. But that effectively has put us on a slight in terms of requiring additional work to be done. In terms of the work, we are, these are the list of streams that you can see on the screen. We're doing cost estimations, O and M cost estimation as well, which will be after we've done the capital cost. We're also working on the new river crossing project root alignment as well. We are identifying properties impacted by New River crossing options as directed by the city commission. One thing here I would like to identify, we've raised, while we have the tunnel layout and the project alignment, the county has informed us that they are working on a bridge from mid-level to low-level bridge options. So, because we do not have any project design on, of a bridge, it is, it might not be viable or possible at this stage for us to identify any properties impacted as a result of a bridge option. However, we are putting together a rough estimation, so we will share sort of a range instead of our definitive number on the bridge as we progress. As a next update, next slide. We have been actively meeting different, we have been actively involving different stakeholders of the project. Broward County, we have met with them, I think, almost three times. We are very grateful to Mr. Kevin Kelleher for facilitating and being, making himself available. And we've also met twice with the Florida Department of Transportation as well. We've also met once with Broward MPO, thanks to Commissioner Sturman. And interestingly, we've also met with Florida East Coast Railway as well. It was a very cordial meeting with them. We've received good feedback. However, we have not been able to discuss any technical design or layout of the tunnel project option. But they have committed to us that they would bring in their technical resources and schedule a follow-up meeting with them once we are ready. And because of some queries and issues which have been identified, we are still working through them on the tunnel design. That's why we have sort of deferred the meeting with Florida East Coast Railways and their technical team, but they have shown keen inclination to at least sit with us and go through the tunnel option. We're also working with Brightline as well. I will raise a few areas that, that we are still require more information with Brightline. If you go to the next, yeah. In terms of the feedback, I think horizontal alignment, which basically relates to, while we were aware of this, this, the first design was a very conceptual design, please do consider that. That was a 1% to 3% level of design engineering which was involved in that. We were aware of certain issues, but we did not have enough data to assess whether it would have any piling impacts on the New River Crossing where the existing bascule bridges. We have now gathered and looked at USGIS data, which is a Geotech data, and as a result, there is a slight modification that we are working on right now, which may have a slight route alignment. However, till now, we do not have a significant right-of-way changes. But whatever the minor changes are, we are working through them, and we would bring those to the commission as a next step. Along with that, we would also bring in any cost implications if it has, so we are working through that. But important thing to note is, anything under the bridge piling is basically going outright outside the bridge pilings, which require, means that on the northern side, majority of the property is owned by the city. So, it is primarily requiring a right-of-way access underneath the existing city park and city property. On the south side, we are working through it, so we, once we have those, those design complete, we will come back to you. In terms of vertical alignment, this is also, Commissioner Sturman raises this as a concern as well. While of, there's a small patch in the design, the initial conceptual design. While of, there's a small patch in the design, the initial conceptual design, which required a 4% grade right after the Southwest Seventh Street in our conceptual design. While this is in line with the FRA guidelines and area guidelines, which are the federal guidelines for train, where there is a small component, small area of 600 feet, 4% grade is allowed. However, in our last meeting with Commissioners Sturman, he raised this as a significant issue. We are working on it to identify alternate options, which do not have an impact on Southwest Seventh Street at all. So they will be crossing, we were working through that as well. Other issues raised have been resiliency and other resiliency issues. These are primarily related to the floodgates. We have had some interaction with Miami Port Tunnel, and the floodgates cost is now being incorporated in the Level Four cost estimations. However, as of right now, without quoting a sick number, I would say those impacts is insignificant on our total cost. Then the next issue is environmental and traffic issues. I think environmental relates to the excavated materials, the staging areas. Vice Mayor, last meeting in December 19th, raised some issues regarding staging areas. Those were indicative staging areas. We have now worked through identifying various different alternate staging areas, and those right-of-way costs would be for the staging area would be incorporated in the total cost estimate as well. In terms of excavated materials, we are still working through, in terms of excavated materials, in terms of identifying dumping sites, in terms of identifying how many trucks would go out in a city from, once we run the TBM machines. So we will have those numbers incorporated in the total Level Four cost estimates as well. Apart from that, the station design and cost, we had initially a single-station design, which was a commuter rail cost incorporated in the initial rough order of magnitude cost when we had shared. While in discussions with the county and FDOT, they have requested to consider also two stations or two platforms, one for Brightline, one for the commuter rail. Our initial cost estimate is in line with the previous cost estimates provided by FDOT and also in the previous reports as well, which was a single station. However, we would now, we are now working on a single station, which will be for the commuter rail, but also an alternate as an add-on for the Brightline as well. One thing I would like to also share here that in our meeting with the Director of Transportation with the county, Ms. Corey Cafflin has shared that they're not very 100% sure whether the commuter rail station would be at the same location as the Brightline station. However, we are incorporating the cost, and those costs would be shared as a separate line item, so that if it is required to be removed, you can remove that.
So there's discussion about having a completely separate station for the commuter line as it relates to the Fort Lauderdale stop?
Yes, they're still thinking about it. So nothing is final. It may be, it may not be. This was the feedback which was provided to us.
Well, in other words, what the thought was, maybe, no, the Brightline's going to be Brightline's going to be Brightline. So subterranean, they'll have their station there, and the commuter rail might be the Broward General Stop as opposed to, that was the thought was, right?
Yes, or maybe another alternate stop which is on the ground. So we don't know yet.
I see.
And they're still working through those modalities right now.
All right, good, thank you.
I think one thing also that they have shared is that they're still working through the tunnel design. I think we heard, I'm not 100% sure, but we heard that county has just approved to engage another consultant to work through bridge options from mid-level to low-level bridge options as well.
Did that happen today?
This is what I've been...
Mr. Kelleher, maybe, Mr. Kelleher is here, maybe he can give us some more information on that.
Yes. In terms of, Commissioners Sturman requested us in the last meeting about the depth of the river. So Commissioners Sturman, this data is from the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration, which is a federal entity. The depth of the river at the crossing is between 12 to 15 feet at max. So this was, these are, if you see, these are various different queries which require advanced engineering answers. We are working through them. So as soon as we have, we will come back and present as we cross each part. And I think once we've done that, the idea would be to present with other stakeholders, including Brightline, and also with FECR as well, and also share the results with the county and FDOT as well. I would like to bring in my colleague, Tom, to give you a brief explanation of how these project development stages go through, just because this is a huge, large, complex infrastructure project, just to give you an idea of where we stand today and what is probably the right path that the city should adopt as a few options as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So one thing, going back on the Brightline, just a reminder, I know the commissioners know this, but obviously there are different security requirements between the commuter and the Brightline, and that's part of the alchemy there.
Security in terms of passengers entering and exiting this station?
Correct. And so then that will be one of the challenges there, is Brightline will have a different security protocol than what the commuter rail will have.
The commuter line having less security, is that what you're saying?
That's correct. And so that's something to remember, why when we talk about if somebody in the audience were to go, why do we talk in terms of two separate, that's why it would be, because Brightline does have those.
This is at the station level. In other words, you don't want somebody coming in commuter rail and end up in Orlando type of a deal.
Well, no, I think he's also talking about, when you go into...
Actually, Brightline has a...
You know, when you go into Brightline, you got to show ID and all this other stuff.
Yeah, but once you're on the platform, they want to make sure that you're getting on the right train.
Well, the problem is the Brightline, they want security on the train, and so if you didn't go through, same way as the airport, right, you go through. So it's closer to an airport security as opposed to the subway in New York, just for two. So I mean, that's just something to note there, is that you actually have to keep the passenger stream separate. And so that's why we end up talking in terms of two separate, just for the people in the community.
Okay, all right. That helps clarify it, okay.
I mean, like you have baggage, then you'd think, things that you wouldn't have on a commuter rail, you're not going to have checked luggage and all that sort of stuff.
Exactly, exactly. So, well, we thought this was an appropriate time to take a step back a little bit and talk about where we are in the context of the New River Crossing. And so we wanted to kind of put this up just for you commissioners and the community at large to think in terms of where we are. These are sort of the indicative stages of project development that you have. We are way over on the left in the planning side. Obviously, you get clear to the right, you get to the operations, and everybody's getting on trains and going places. We got a little bit to do between here and there. And so you look at this, we've got project definition, you know, really at some level, we're in that stage right now. We're talking about crossing. We know we need commuter rail in southeast Florida, and we know that we need to get across the New River to do it. Beyond that, there are discussions of bridges, there are discussions of tunnels, but it's an open debate that's been had so far. You have the purpose and need, the conceptual alternatives, that's exactly what we're talking about there again, part of what our job is and obviously what the county is undertaking. And then you're going at the cost benefit, not only of the particular thing that's happening, but what its impact is on the community around it, and not just, obviously, the immediate community, but in this case, clear up the corridor of the commuter rail line. And then you have economic impact, you have project development, environmental. You move to design development, and this is one of the points we wanted to highlight. Then you're looking at the NEPA process, which we've had some conversations of. I know several of you are well aware of it. But that is a process that can be a couple of year or more process that goes in. One of the things you're doing in that process is you're looking at alternatives. One of the alternatives is to not build whatever you're thinking about building. One of the alternatives, in this case, might be a tunnel. One of the alternatives might be different sizes of bridges that could go along. And so I raise that in that we're just evolving into this point where you get to very detailed conversations about what the benefits are, what the costs are, what the impacts are of each of these things. And that is a process that is, I think, renowned in its complexity as you go along. Commissioner?
Could I jump in? Quick question.
Sure.
So how do you quantify economically some of these qualitative benefits or qualitative costs? Curious. Is there an economic model that you use? Is, is there some kind of standard?
The short answer is yes. If you want more detail, turn it over to the financial guy.
So typically, what we do is we look at the direct impact, economic impact, which relates to the cost-benefit analysis. Once we pass that, then we look at the indirect impact of one alternative over the other in the project, and generally as a project on the economic in terms of job creation and other impacts. And lastly, we look at the trickle-down effect, which is the induced effect, impact on the economy as a whole as well. So there are three layers of how you do an economic impact analysis to effectively assess what is the economic benefit to the society as a large.
Right, I'm sorry, apparently I'm not being clear in my question. So I get that part, that's fairly straightforward. When you talk about, you know, the community impact though, so these are intangibles. How do you, how are you quantifying the intangible, you know, which has been a big part of our discussion about, you know, this is going to be, this is going to negatively impact certain aspects of our community, it won't impact them. How do you assess that?
So the way we calculate it is, there's economic statistical models which are available, which are being used to fill in data to calculate those assessments. For example, if you're looking at a trickle-down impact, it would have, you do a trickle-down impact, and the qualitative impacts are quantified effectively to come out with the results. For example, it can be as simple as, so while job creation can be a qualitative analysis in terms of this many number of jobs created, but then you quantify that through the actual number of what is the economic activity of that job creation would be. I'm just giving you one example.
I'm sorry, that's still not, that's still not getting to the heart of what I'm trying to ask. So again, I'll, let me frame it another way. So part of this discussion has been that this is going to create a negative impact on neighborhoods west of the tracks. How do you quantify that economically?
So yes, if there is an economic impact, but in terms of what sort of impact, we go into detail in terms of assessing what sort of an impact would be, whether it would hinder their mobility impact, that they would not become, they would become immobile, they would become disjointed, whether that would have an impact on them finding any job opportunities. Yes, those would be then called quantified through the statistical models to make an assessment.
To further his question, I think, we're trying to, if this is going, depending upon which alternative is approved, the question is, how do you assess, is there an economic assessment to quality of life?
Yes.
There are models for that.
Yes.
Okay, so if one, if one alternative is chosen, is there a series of models, economic models, that will assess how it will economically impact what the historic district, the entertainment district, the housing district, all of that, the visual separation of communities, all of that? There isn't, there is, there is an economic valuation standard that is applied?
Yes, there are standards.
That's what, thank you, Mayor. I thought I was speaking clearly, but apparently I'm not, so...
You were, you were, but sometimes, it's okay, no problem.
And the answer is too, some of them are going to be based on other places, right, that you're taking comparisons. Some of them will be based on assumptions, so I mean, it's part art, per science.
But there are models out there that can help, and not going to be perfect, obviously, and some of them are going to be subjective too, right?
Right. I mean, the other part's fairly straightforward. If I've got, you know, if we have an expectation of a construction site, we can estimate how many people are going to work there and what prevailing wages are. That's relatively straightforward. I just want to understand, and I want, I'm hoping your report will clarify and show your source data, because I like source data, I'm an auditor. How you come to a conclusion of above-ground versus below-ground and a disparate impact on various neighborhoods, like you said, driving back and forth. Well, obviously, you can drive under as well as over, so when you get to that point, I'd really like to see some meat behind that. So, thank you.
So to move along on what I was talking about, so at that design development stage, you end up, this is where you move into about the 30% design, so about 10 times of where we sit now, and, or three times of where we may well be soon, because we have advanced, as Umer said, beyond the 1% to 3%, as we've had the iterative conversations with the county and the other stakeholders, addressing issues like pilings and other things. And so there's quite a bit that goes on. You begin setting up budget, you begin setting up procurement strategy, you begin really putting together, and the project begins to take form. This is a key point where you're really making those final decisions that set the target then for final design, construction, and obviously, operation. Now, I raised this in the context that since in December you sent us and had us begin looking at this project, there are some opportunities that have come up that we would suggest would be viable ways for the city to continue to move forward and frankly, set itself up to continue moving towards the crossing, whether it's a bridge or whether it's a tunnel, to help as a partner with all of the southeast Florida, with the county, with everybody else. And that's availability of a raised planning grant that the NOFO was released in late December and is due later this month. And also to engage with the Build America Bureau. The Build America Bureau, once again, in a very open process, we can work with them to begin assessing and have their assistance frankly in assessing what federal funds are available. And whether it's a tunnel or a bridge, in any case, we want to build a project, right, that achieves the crossing, right, that facilitates commuter rail for South Florida, but then at the same time minimizes impacts and accentuates the outcomes to the best outcome for the community. And so we think these would be things for the city to look at doing to help move this forward going on. With that, you can look, and the document speaks for itself, but we just thought it would be good to highlight this for you and the community to see where we sit in the process and what's to come and what all would be there. And take any questions.
Okay. Does that complete your up-to-date analysis? Great. Well, obviously, you've been doing a lot of work in the last couple of weeks since we last saw you, so this is, this is great. Does anyone have any, we have one person sign up to speak. Does anyone have any questions of these gentlemen before, let's see, who signed up to speak? Chris Nelson. Chris, are you here? Okay, great. Is there anything else that you, any other questions we have? We're good? John's left. Okay. All right, so don't go away. Mr. Nelson wants to speak. Mr. Nelson, you want to come up?
And when Mr. Nelson comes up, I think Ben wanted us to summarize what the next steps are.
Okay.
Or after Mr. Nelson.
Go ahead.
Before you begin, Mr. Nelson, give me one second. Ben, where did Ben go? Ben, could you do me a favor, Ben? Would you be able to, no, Chris, don't go too far. Would you be able to pull up a map? I just want to go through, something that was brought up in our meeting, which roads are, on the south side of the river, which intersections would be closed and traffic diverted? Any way that you could get something to be...
Do you want one of the renderings or one of the aerial maps from last time that showed the color codes of the tunnel and how it would be constructed?
That would be good, helpful, thank you. Mr. Nelson, thank you.
Yes, Chris Nelson, Fort Lauderdale, how's it going, Commission? So I was at the Broward Commission earlier today, and they're going forward with the options for the bridge. And I just want to reiterate that with this whole bridge versus tunnel thing, it feels like the support for the tunnel is just as astroturf as the astroturf that's on top of the Kinney Tunnel. Because what happens is the developer and the lawyer, they go around to all of these civic associations, and they tell everybody, oh, we have to have a tunnel, we must have a tunnel. They even tried to say that they were gonna, oh, they're gonna come in and take your land away, and they even at one point tried to say that if you're for the bridge, then you might be a racist, because they tried to say the bridge was racist, which was nonsense, because Commissioner McKinney this morning was saying that, that, no, it's not, not lines that divide people, it's people that divide people. So there's been a lot of these scare tactics that I've seen in regard to the bridge versus tunnel, and I just want to say, when we look at the Kinney Tunnel, the Kinney Tunnel is still under construction. And is this what we're going to be dealing with? And also, like, I live in Los Olas by the River. Like, I would be impacted by this. So when I see that people that are pushing for this, I wonder, do they live next to the tunnel? Do they live next to where this is going to be to have to... Do they live next to where this is gonna be to have to listen to that all the time? No, I doubt it. And if you look at Brightline, I don't think many people use that. And then, Mr. Mayor, you made the, you said the comment, you were like, this is about social engineering in a way, and I mean, I just, I don't, I mean, trying to push people out of cars, I mean, yeah, when you're sitting on 95, you don't wanna be, you, you think about it, like, why do people have to drive so much? But it's really not the government's job to try to push, to try to social engineer people, all right? If people wanna, wanna drive, you agree? I'm glad you agree. But I'm concerned that the, that the point of this tunnel is to, is not, not because they wanna make the city a better place, but because, for financial interest, so they can develop more, because it's developers and their lawyers that are pushing this thing so hard. So I just wanna say, not everybody in the city is, 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 is all about this tunnel, is what I'm trying to say.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Rogers, you wanna tell us what our next steps are? Where'd you go? He wasn't going to bite, you didn't have to go that far away.
Sorry about that, Mayor, I was actually working with IT to try to get the map for Commissioner Stern, so.
I'm just kidding.
So I think once IT gets it via email, they'll, they'll throw it up. So in the meantime, Commissioner, I think if I can, Mayor, just a quick update on next steps. So as you heard today, there's been a lot of conversations going on, there's been a lot of concerns put forth that, that BDO is working on, and I think they've got the commitment and the urgency behind them. Again, they're not three or four people that you've seen here, but they're a worldwide firm with plenty of resources and a lot of people working on this effort. So they're working as fast as they can, and I've urged them to be cautious not to bring a half-baked product or something that's not fully ready for consumption. So that's one of the things I wanna say.
This is what the county did?
No, this is just for, as BDO is working now.
Oh, yeah, well, we, we understand, we understand the reason for their coming today is to just not keeping the commission in the dark and to hearing the continual progress that they're making in trying to analyze this.
So, so we're gonna try to schedule one for, for the next meeting as well, depending on the information that BDO gets and how much progress it makes, we'll determine the topic of that meeting. One thing I did wanna seek feedback from the commission on is, is they just identified kinda two opportunities or recommendations. One is that the city submit an application for a raise grant for planning. I believe that the planning effort with that grant goes somewhere upwards of $50 million?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five million dollars. And so that deadline is the end of this month. I think we have sufficient materials that we could submit an application for, but I wanted to get that direction, Mr. Mayor, from the commission, on if we should be submitting an application for the raise grant for planning dollars for the new river crossing.
Well, wouldn't it make, wouldn't it make sense for us to do that? Yeah.
Again, just wanted to make sure that that is the direction from the commission.
Yeah, I mean, that, that continues to provide information to the commission when, as it needs to make decisions, that we should be, it should be fact-based, and if, and absolutely, if we have more and more opportunities to ferret out that information, I think it makes a lot of sense. I think most of the commission would agree with that.
I, I have a question. I've heard a couple of times that, today that the Broward County Commission made some form of a decision to continue in the route of the bridge. With that and the direction, you know, we've been going back and forth, bridge versus tunnel. When, how, how much, when do we, when do we, I'm gonna say, stop the process if this county has made the decision to move forward with the bridge? How long will we continue as a commission? Because I, I was one who said, let's move forward with the bridge. So I'm trying to figure out how much, how long would this continue to go on? And how much more money is it gonna be with us?
So, Mr. Keller had to leave, he had another commitment, but he did let me know that the action the commission took today, the county commission, was to authorize this county administrator to utilize their existing contracts and continue the conceptual design of a bridge and other new river crossing considerations. I don't have specifics, I can't answer questions, but he did wanna relay that, and that had a $2 million not to exceed on it.
So let me follow up on that. My information is that the county commission voted unanimously today to move forward, to spend up to $2 million to do an environmental study and design that will, that will provide the county commission with information assessing a 30-to-40-foot bridge. All right, let's stop with that right now. A 30-to-40-foot bridge has been completely dismissed by the Marine Industries Association as being much too low for their purposes. So I don't know whether they just shot themselves in the foot by doing this, but the Marine Industries Association has said to us repeatedly, as well as individual marine shipyard owners have come to me and said, that nothing less than a 50-foot bridge is appropriate for them. All right, moving forward, the $2 million also includes funds to provide opportunities to study what the city of Fort Lauderdale is doing regarding the tunnel, the tunnel study option, based on the comprehensive study that we are doing, for them to have a more comprehensive analysis as to the merits of both the tunnel and the bridge design. And, and so if that's, if that's what they had done today, I think they are still keeping open-minded with regard to options, and I think it behooves us to continue to work in the way we have been. I credit the staff for moving forward with this, and I think it's helping the commission now, our commission, understand a little bit better on the basis upon which we're going to ultimately have to make a decision. So anything further that we can do to help, you know, give us additional information, I think justifies moving forward.
Yeah, and I think to answer your question, Vice Mayor, as well, is that this grant opportunity would take that burden from the city and it would have a federal funding source. And again, the grant opportunity is up to $25 million for the planning aspects, so this isn't to design or to put a shovel in the ground, but it's for the, the planning aspects.
Okay, all right, very good.
Thank you for that clarity, thank you.
So I, I do have kind of a larger question. This has sort of been something that's been bothering me for a while now, separate and distinct from tunnel versus bridge. I'm still struggling to understand how we wound up with BDO in this whole process, right? So Ben, you had sent me a purchase order that we had done, and it was, let me pull this up. It's a $75,000 purchase order, and we did this in October, right? But I also see that we were having meetings with BDO back in April of 2022 to talk about bridge versus tunnel. So help me understand why we were having conversations with BDO in April of 2022, and then why we're contracting with them in October of 2023? What happened in that interim period? I, I need to understand this, because I'm not comfortable with how the whole procurement process has worked.
So I could, I could speak on that. BDO approached us with understanding that we had this item under discussion for some time, and they were, they approached us with details on what they offer as far as a consultant basis, and they also shared with us how they had experts in their firm that provided cities and other government agencies support with determining how they can finance a project. So this was also, some of their discussions were also discussed by the Broward Workshop, or at the Broward Workshop as well. And as a result, their first engagement for the one that you mentioned for $75,000, that was to answer specific questions that remain unanswered with the White House report that was being completed jointly with the county.
Okay, so, so what happened between April of 2022 then and, and October of 2023 with these ongoing discussions? So again, and this goes back to, you know, our traditional procurement process where we would have gone out to bid, we would have gotten, you know, competitive, and it seems like all of that was short-circuited.
Well, the $75,000, what I understand is that we modeled another contract that offered the services that we needed, again.
And let's, let's, let's pause there too, because I've looked at the West Palm contract that we're talking about here, and that had nothing to do with the type of work that we're engaged in here.
So I'm gonna ask Finance or, or Linda to assist us with answering your questions.
Because didn't that have to do with the relocation of a police station?
I'm gonna ask how we vetted the proposal from BDO.
Okay.
So that they can share how we procured that. I'm not sure if Glenn Marcos is here.
Andy Glenn, by the, this, this is not a, this is not to be taken as any criticism of BDO, this is our process and, and how we got to where we are internally. I have a lot of trouble with this.
Sure, so if I could have Linda come up. And certainly, we, we looked at modeling a contract that, or not modeling a contract, but following the procurement guidelines so that we can get the similar services, which is looking at the financial planning, looking at the viability of a project. And Linda can share more on that.
Underneath the microphone, underneath the microphone. Okay. Read, press here, and I get the right answer. Good afternoon, Commissioner, and Mayor and Commissioner. So the city did look at the contract, and the chief procurement officer at the time, looking at the West Palm Beach piggyback, did determine that it was similar or like services, and he was, he determined that we could piggyback the contract at a time that we did the award for $75,000 to BDO. He is not here right now, so I can't go through the ins and outs of his determination, but that's how we came to develop the PO and institute the contract for the $75,000.
So if we're looking at a police station, how does that correlate to tunnel work? Those two things could not be further apart in terms of what they entail for construction or anything else?
Well, it was services.
It was to evaluate the, the funding related to the police station?
I understand that, but we weren't looking at it for actually the police station, it has to do with consultant services. And so as a consultant, we were able to, through that West Palm Beach contract, find line items that we thought were similar in nature to the process that they were doing with the BDO, I mean, with the, the tunnel. So they were, it was consulting services, not necessarily contracts for a police station. So consulting service to service, professional service-wise, he thought, he determined that it could be used.
So it was consult, but it was consulting services to evaluate the viability of a police station, and I just don't see how that correlates to consulting services related to tunnel construction, which is what we're using them for now.
So it was, it was project viability in general, and so project viability, you're looking at, for instance, different things from the, like, how you could pay for it, how long it would take to pay for it, conditions, you're looking at preliminary work, it's not planning, it's not design, okay, that's more specific, but it's looking at, at the consultant to give you more information about prior to start, pre-start work. So that is what we base that procurement under.
Isn't that consulting primarily related to the financial aspects of that contract? Was there anything in that West Palm contract that had to do with feasibility of construction? Or is it simply related to the financial aspects?
I'm gonna have to request for Chief Procurement Officer to come by and...
Sure, and while we're doing that, Pat, has your office looked at this procurement at all?
I'm sorry, what is the question?
Has your office looked at the steps leading up to the procurement of the BDO contract and its expansion?
I have not. The only thing that I was aware of when it first came, at one of the commission meetings that was discussed, was that it, it fell under the procurement of the city manager's ability to procure something below 100,000, 100,000 below, that's what I recall.
Right, so that, that just has to do with his signature authority, it has nothing else to do with the applicability of the contract that we're executing, so just so we're clear on that. In other words, it doesn't have to come to the commission for approval, he has the authority to sign the agreement without commission approval. It doesn't necessarily mean that everything that is being done is consistent with the rest of the procurement code.
Okay.
So go ahead, Ben.
So I was just gonna clarify, and, and for the record, the BDO action, right, which I think we'll need the Chief Procurement Officer to come opine of why he, why he had that decision. But I heard you say the police headquarters or police building for West Palm, this contract was issued first as a global, let me see the title of it, it's Consulting Services for Redevelopment Strategic Planning, and then a task order was issued for the police building there, so.
Right, right, that's a good point, thank you. Redevelopment and strategic planning. So I wanna understand how redevelopment and strategic planning relates to the viability of tunnel versus bridge, because those two things have absolutely nothing to do with each other.
Well, can I just interrupt something for a second? The contract with BDO was approved by the commission, and I think you were part of that approval.
Right, but it was subsequent because it was based on this prior contract. So this was brought forward as a continuation of an existing contract, and now that I've had an opportunity to look more closely at the existing contract that that was predicated upon, I have significant concerns about that.
Well, I, I think...
So we, we, I'm sorry, Mayor, just to finish that thought, you know, we are given certain information upon which we then base our decisions. I'm looking at the underlying information that we were provided, and I have concerns about that, because I don't think it accurately reflects the context of, of the existing contract that we were being asked to expand and extend.
Okay, well, you know, that might be an interesting topic to discuss at another time, but in terms of the merit of what they're doing, you, you, you had previously said you're not questioning that, you're just talking about the nature of the procurement. We are, I think we're kinda past that now, we have already approved it, we're moving forward with them, they are doing an amazing job, they're probably people questioning the things to try to undermine them, but these people have been really very helpful to the commission in terms of providing information, not just to this commission, but to other members of the community. I know they've spoken, you've seen where they've spoken with quite a few groups in the, in the community, including a member, the county, as well as FECR. They have become an important tool and are trying to make a proper decision. The procurement process, I think, you know, we're past that, I think that we, if, if there was a question regarding that, it probably should have come up at an earlier time, perhaps when we were first voting on whether or not to hire them. But I think, you know, in all fairness to this, to the processes it now exists, in fairness to our community, I think we should just like move on and, and let's continue with what we're doing and trying to make the best decision and determine what the locally preferred alternative should be. I mean, I don't know why this is being brought up at this point, because I don't think it weighs on the merits of what these folks are doing right now.
No, because I don't think that what they were hired to do is reflective of the purchasing decision that we were making. I disagree with that entirely, I think the process matters.
What was the, well, I don't say, I didn't say the process didn't matter.
I'm, I'm saying that I don't believe that this contract was appropriately awarded, that's all.
Okay, all right, thank you. Anything further from the commission? There being none?
I'll wait till the end.
Okay, Mr. Rogers, you wanna continue?
Yeah, so I, I guess, again, for, for clarification, staff's gonna work on an application for the raise grant with a deadline of this month, will probably bring back an item on the next agenda for resolution support that we can include in that grant application package.
Okay, thank you.
Well, actually, I will bring up a few things if I can.
Wait, is, are you finished?
No, I would say, and the second action that BDO is recommending is that we work with the Build America Bureau and submit them a letter of interest that would show that the city is interested in starting conversations about funding opportunities or financing opportunities with their bureau to figure out next steps and what opportunities may or may not exist.
Well, that would, that would weigh on the viability of either option, correct? So, and that's what this commission wants to know, is the viability of, of whether a tunnel is financially viable. So if we had information from the federal government, I guess that would help, be helpful for this commission to know if it's really financially viable going forward, so I think that too makes sense.
Yeah, I think it's another puzzle piece, and just again, wanted to make sure that this commission was fine or comfortable with, with city staff starting that process to submit a letter of interest.
Okay.
What are, what are they actually gonna be answering? What's the question that they're, what are they gonna be answering with that?
So what, what it is, is it's just the, the first step or the formal step of saying that we're interested in looking into opportunities with their bureau to understand what financing mechanisms, funding opportunities there are, and it, it really just memorializes that we're engaging with them.
Federal or, or?
Federal, federal.
Strictly, okay.
Does that conclude your remarks?
That concludes my remarks.
Okay, very good, thank you. Commissioner Sturman, do you have any other questions?
Yeah, I have a few things I'd like to talk about.
Sure.
Kevin's no longer here, Mr. Kelleher, he's gone already?
He had left the, at the beginning of the presentation.
Okay, at some point, doesn't have to be right now, would like to get a summary of what the county decided today. That, that would be kind of helpful. Let me start out by thanking a few things. First, I want to thank you, Ben. On short notice, you, you did a phenomenal job getting a group together. Retended by BDO, the county, Kevin was part of that. F dot Phil, he's not in the audience, is he? He was here. MPO Greg was there, Steve Hudson, as well as Representative DDA, as well as-
Where was this?
This was a meeting that we had, that, that was, they had a full presentation, an hour. We had a part in person, part on Zoom. It was very useful. I want to thank BDO for, for attending.
Where, oh, interesting. Was this a notice meeting?
No, 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 no. They, we, we were all given an opportunity for us to present to us. There was no two commissioners, just me and myself.
Okay, all right.
And I decided-
No, no, I'm just wondering, I, because I would have been, I would have loved to have gone to that meeting.
No, you couldn't, because you couldn't have two commissioners.
No, but I'm just asking if it was noticed, I-
No, no, no.
So Mayor, if you might recall, that we reached out through, through the commission office, through city manager's office, and just offered the opportunity for each commissioner to meet with BDO. Commissioner Sturman took that offer up and then asked that other stakeholders attend that meeting.
Ah, I see, okay.
Right, and that was actually very quite useful. Just want to reiterate, you know, I've said this before, a tunnel is a preferred option. We're looking for opportunities to, to make it happen. We need to work with the county, especially, you know, with funding, things like that. So looping the county in is, is critical. But I want to thank you for the work you've done and the presentation. The river depth, you've answered that. The questions that we did have at that meeting, so I could share this with the community. One of the questions we had, what's underneath the current river at the, at the crossing where the bridges for the railroad tracks? Are there pilings, how deep the pilings are, concrete? And that's something I don't think we have an exact answer to, but that, you're looking into that at this particular point. Number three is, we do know that FECI, Bright Line, and I've spoken to them several times, that they are excited about the project, excited about commuter rail in addition to the Bright Line service that they provide. They do not have any preference with bridge or tunnel. But FECR, this is the, this is the freight part of it. We're not exactly sure if they have permission for a tunnel unless that question was answered since we met before. We're still, we don't have that down pat, or do we, do we get that since we spoke?
I think where we're at right now is that BDO met with FECR. They kind of shared their vision or the concept. And then got a commitment from FECR that when we have the design elements ready, that they would be willing to sit at the table with their technical team and give us feedback on what we provide.
Fantastic.
Right now, we don't have that level of, of design or, or product ready for their review.
And could you show that, that, the graphic that I'd asked you to pull up? If you could show that real quick, so for the audience, some of the things that we had spoken about at our meeting. I don't see that in front of us. Okay, there you go.
Commissioner Sturman, if you just allow me to, one small comment.
Oh, please, absolutely, please.
FECR did confirm to us they have no political preference in terms of either a bridge or a tunnel.
Thank you for reaching out, thank you for confirming, I appreciate that. The, the two things, and these go hand in hand, is as they build the tunnel, you know, the portal, if you will, for lack of a better term, is, no, you could, you could come back up. Don't be, I'm not going to bite you. We're all friends here, please. Okay. As they build the tunnel, the portals are going to affect the current crossings. And you have sixth, I think sixth, seventh, and ninth on the south side. Is that correct? Those are the three. And you had mentioned, depending on the length of the platform, and that determines the length of the tunnel itself, will impact whether those do or do not stay open. I think the platform that you had suggested was 800 feet, if I'm not mistaken. That was the original, correct?
So right now, if you see on the map, the green line is around 600 feet. This is at 4% grade.
No, no, the platform under the station, the platform under the station.
Yes. Platform and station is around 800 feet, which was informed, which is currently the Bright Line station is, as of right now. However, Bright Line has informed us that they would like to have 1,000 feet.
1,000 feet, so that's going to be 200 feet. Now, one of the things you mentioned, which was, was encouraging, is that, you know, you're going to be boring for the tunnels. And, not that it's boring to talk about tunnels, but you're going to be boring for the tunnels. And the thought was to do the platform where the station was going to be underneath was going to require open cut. And what you brought forth at our last meeting is that there is an opportunity to actually perform and produce a platform, a subterranean platform with a station without having to do open cut.
Yes, yes.
Do you want to share that with?
So it's basically a synthesized construction method, which is also called, I'm not an engineer, so my colleague is not here, but, but all I, I can explain is basically box construction underneath the ground. So it's not a curtain cover, but underground, it's going to be a box which is created and excavated. So it will be a box construction, it's a synthesized parallel construction alongside the tunnel, which basically avoids the open curtain cover. So have no impact on the above-ground existing station or above-ground rail, rail, current rail lines as well. One thing we are also working to secure additional data is there are, F dot Phil shop basically identified to us that there are piling issue underneath the existing Bright Line station.
There are what?
Pilings underneath the existing Bright Line station. So we are securing that data, geotech data, because there is no geotech data available right now and the existing FECR right away. So we are struggling to find, but we are working through to get hold of as much data. We require that to make that assessment of how the construction can actually happen underneath.
Thank you, because that's going to be quite important. Now, looking at the original, with the 800 feet, go through those three crossings, go through sixth, seventh, and ninth. I guess regardless of how you, how you place it, Sixth Avenue is going to be sacrificed. You're not going to be able to cross the tracks at six, because that's where the portal's going to be, is that?
Yes, so portals are already underground. So six would not have an impact. The impact would be on the Seventh Street corridor.
Oh, Seventh.
Seventh, this is Seventh Street. So one option we are working on is either to extend it beyond the ninth, beyond, before the Seventh Street or after the Seventh Street. So right now, it's, the Seventh Street is the one, if we extend the length of it in order to reduce the grade to 3%, would be the Seventh Street. But there are alternates that we are working on, which would avoid having any impact on the rail crossing.
Okay, so as it's, so I stand corrected then. So as it stands right now, the, the portal's going to be south of sixth. So at sixth crossing, that will, that will be, that will be above, that will be preserved.
So green is basically where the depressed section is.
And show me where sixth is on that map. Sixth, I think it's to your-
This is sixth.
Okay, so sixth will-
Sixth is the, is the, I think this is the wrong slide. Let me just take you to the right slide. Okay. So, so green is where the depressed section is.
Okay.
There's no impact on that. It's the red section, which is already underground, but it's a shorter one curtain cover. So the impact would be, if we extend it, the impact would be on the seventh, southwest Seventh Street. So we are working in as an alternate solution, which can basically extend this red grade to a little longer as well.
So sixth will remain open. People needing to go to Publix, for instance, could still cross the tracks at, at grade level.
Yes.
Now, Seventh, for the moment, looks like that's where the portal's going to be. That's the north end of Hardy Park. And that's going to, now, if the, if the platform has to be extended to 1,000 feet or greater, that line is going to be, obviously, it's going to be moved southward, correct? So you're going to, so ninth is going to be the one that would be closed, or we're not sure yet?
Yeah. Go back to seven, please.
And I think there'll be, I think I'm putting my colleagues to sleep here.
Go back to seven. So Commissioner, I just want to clarify real quick, because I want to make sure there's a uniform understanding. So the portal right now, in, in the current locate, layout, is between the green and the red. Okay, so it's south of sixth, north of seventh.
Okay.
The concern or the feedback that we've heard so far is that green section, which is the depressed section, which open to air, has a 4% grade to it right now. And the reason it has that 4% grade for that short period of time is because we didn't want to impact the crossing at seventh. To address the concerns of having a 4% grade, and if we had to make a 3% grade or a 2% grade, that green line would extend south and, and stop somewhere probably between seventh and ninth. If that would happen, what BDO is looking into now is how could we modify the intersection at seventh? Can you do an underpass? Do you do an overpass? Is there a little connector that would leave that crossing still open if that green line had to be extended? At this point, we're not in a, a position where we can make definitive statements on where that green line would end, or if, or if not, the, the crossing would be impacted. But that's kind of the concern right now that we're working on.
Fair enough. I mean, I didn't want an answer, but I just want people to know some of the issues that we're looking at. I mean, the depth that we went into and some, you know, community wants to know how this impacts. So obviously, as work comes along, you'll have more definitive answers, but thank you for, for your, for coming forward.
Thank you so much. I just want to say one other thing. I had a conversation a couple of weeks ago with, I believe it was the contractor for the Miami Tunnel, was it the contractor and the current operator? It was a very good conversation. In the end, he invited us to go down and, and visit that tunnel, go take a look at it and so forth. So I invite anybody from the commission who wants to participate in that visit, everyone is welcome. Since it's a fact finding thing, it doesn't violate sunshine, as long as we don't talk about, you know, next steps. But, but he did tell us a couple of interesting things. The capital cost for that project was $652 million. And I believe it's 1.1 miles approximately. And 652 million for just, you know, for the, all in for the construction. The other thing he said is the 44-foot wide tunnel, two tunnels at 44 feet, which is twice the size of what we're looking at. So it's a much grander project, and it came in under budget and in less time than was originally projected to be finished. So, so there, there are positives to be seen in tunnel construction, and there are opportunities. So I just wanted to just bring that to everyone's attention. So thank you, Ben, I appreciate it. Thank you, gentlemen, we appreciate it. But we're moving, we're getting late now, we have a lot to still talk about, so.
Please include me in with that.
Yeah, I'd love to participate. I'm sorry, what was that?
Please include, I'd love to participate.
Yeah.
In the field trip, if you will.
Okay, this is really important. Is it Laura that's going to be making this presentation?
Yes, she is.
Yeah. This is a summary of what we talked about during our goal-setting session.
Is it okay to get started?
Yes.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm Laura Race, Director of Office of Management and Budget. I'm here this afternoon as a recap of your January 19th goal-setting session. So y'all shared a lot of your goals and aspirations and some key themes with you, and staff went back and tried to organize that into some categories. So that was Exhibit 1. What we came up with as a draft for your consideration is public safety, homelessness initiatives, affordable housing, and economic development, transportation and traffic, infrastructure and resilience, public spaces, and community initiatives. And what you'll see in the exhibit is we tried to indicate what items we lumped under, what themes, trying to capture everything you said. If we missed something, we would like to hear that from you now, because what the next steps are for city staff is we'll take any modifications you have. And then we've already kicked off our fiscal year 2025 budget process. So we're going to try to make sure that there are department proposals that are aligned with these initiatives, so that we can move forward these into fiscal year 25. So with that, I'd like to hear your feedback, if possible, Mayor.
Okay, start with Commissioner Herbst. Did you have a chance to review this and have any additional thoughts you'd like to contribute?
I did, and no, I don't, thank you.
I didn't hear the rest of, what was that? You did?
I said I did, and I have nothing else to add.
Okay. Vice Mayor?
Good afternoon to everyone. And Laura and staff, you all did a great job recapturing our discussion. Everything that I definitely discussed, and I see it here in the draft, so I am, I have no comments as to-
No further comments, okay. Commissioner Glassman?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And again, I also wanted to thank you and staff for putting this together. Excellent. Mayor, everything that I wanted to see, perhaps added, I had that discussion yesterday in my pre-agenda meeting with staff, so I'm good, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Sturman?
Laura, thank you for doing this. I'm glad that you took the week off as opposed to rushing it at that meeting. So great job, nothing to add, thank you.
Okay, I have a few comments.
Okay.
This past weekend, I was, along with Commissioner Herbst, had the opportunity to go to a fundraiser over at a shooting range that's over in, on Powerline Road. And I had the opportunity to speak with the owners of that, what's the name of it? What was it called?
So there's two components. One is the private club, which is Founders', and the other is Apex.
Okay.
And the owner is Victor Grilla.
So I, speaking with the folks that have, they have, I think their first business was in the Boston area, now they, they've branched out to South Florida, meaning Fort Lauderdale. One of the things that is important is, is gun safety. And apparently, they have a program that they take to schools, talking about gun safety, how to operate a gun, connecting gun owners with organizations that provide safety clips on, on guns. And they do it for free. And, and so I would like to put it out there to our city staff to see if we can connect with them and see how we can coordinate with our schools, our civic associations, and take this presentation to the neighbors. Because one of the things that's very upsetting is teenage violence with guns. And to be able to bring the, start a conversation in neighborhoods, in families, around kitchen tables, talking about safety with guns, making sure parents put their guns in a safe place where their children can have access to it, just, you know, change the culture, change the conversation, you know, make it look, I mean, I want people to understand that, you know, their city, and their, and their city leaders are very concerned about this. And we need to, you know, anytime we see a death as a result of gun violence is, is a terrible thing for everybody. And, and it distorts the whole conversation about gun ownership and stuff like that, which, you know, is already a settled issue in, at the federal level and at the state level. But we do need to focus on safety and awareness of safety and opportunities to create safe environments, especially when there are young teenagers involved.
Mayor, unfortunately, I wasn't available to attend that event on Sunday. But is there a component as well where there's discussion about gun storage and how to properly,
Yes.
you know, put away your gun? Because a lot of us, we put our guns in our glove compartments, and then they're stolen from cars. And those are also opportunities where guns are in the, in the wrong hands, and we see that type of violence. So is that also-
It's also part of it.
It is a part of it, right.
It's a part of the education program that they have.
And, and along with that, Mayor, I'll add to that, they, they also run a program called GASP. It's Gun Accidental Assault and Suicide Prevention, which they developed with the commissioner for, the police commissioner up in Boston. This is a great program, and again, as you say, they, they offer this at no cost. It's, it's a blue ribbon panel of experts in law enforcement who have helped develop this and working with children. Suicide, unfortunately, is, is one of the issues that particularly impacts youth and guns. And so everything we can do to reach out to kids who are, you know, experiencing, you know, mental health problems, and, and address, you know, the ideation of suicide and, and the availability of firearms, I think is critical to, to bringing those numbers down. I think the more we can do, and I, and I love the idea of reaching out to, to our representatives over on the school board, and trying to work with them collaboratively to bring these programs to as many of them I can. I know I talked with Chief Schultz extensively at that event, and he's very excited about the prospect of collaborating with them. There's another program called BLEED about, you know, about dealing with bleeding and prevention and, and treatment, Stop the Bleed programs. So there's a number of different things that are available. And I know, again, Victor is just, you know, a huge supporter of trying to work with the community to bring these programs and enhance gun safety and, and prevention of accidents and, and things with children. So, thank you.
All right.[1758.28]
And just one other thing, with my colleague explaining that as well. One of the priorities that I had shared, and it is listed here, about the city-wide gun violence prevention, also with us taking the opportunity to explore partnership with Cities United. And I know we'll be looking into that in more detail, but this is also an additional opportunity to take this particular program and expand it grassroots as well.
That would be great. So, but just to get our feet on the ground and start it, I think, it was just a welcome opportunity, so I just wanted to bring it to everyone's attention. Moving on to homelessness, as many of you may have read, the state legislature is contemplating some new laws with regard to homelessness. I'm a little concerned about some of what I've read, so I don't want to, I don't want to judge what's being done there, but I do want to encourage our staff members who are speaking with our representatives and any other agency representatives at the state level, a couple things. Number one, I read where they want to make it illegal to, to, to encamp in a public space, like a park and so forth. You know, I don't believe it's legal anywhere, anywhere in the, in the state. I know it's certainly not legal in our city, but the reality is, if someone is encamping in a public park and we arrest them, okay, you know, if you have 50 people like this, you're not going to populate the jails with homeless people. The, the sheriff will not permit that, the judges will not permit that. So that's not a solution. And so, you know, and most of the time, they won't go to jail. They'll be, they'll be booked, and then they'll, they'll be, they're sent out on their own, they'll return, they have a notice to appear. They're out on the, they're out on the streets again, and asked to, to remain there on their own recognizance, and then they are asked to come back to court, and many times, they don't even show up. So we hope to steer them through our community court by giving them a notice to appear. Sometimes they appear, sometimes they don't. But again, it's not a solution. And so we're hoping that just the whole effort to help homelessness, excuse me, to help cities deal with homelessness can be undertaken with a conversation with the cities, instead of trying to think that it's an initiative that can be established from the top down and implemented locally. Clearly, the, you know, the key factors in homelessness are homes, and it would be great if the state would provide additional funding for affordable housing, and, and not just affordable housing based on 80 to 100%, 80 to 120% AMI, but we're talking about persons who are on the street and who can assist the city in trying to take people off the street. You know, I was interviewed today by a reporter, asking me about this bill, and he, he pointed out that the bus station downtown is riddled with homeless people. And I said, well, that's a county property. And I, I, you know, I implore the county to take care of its own property. You know, they should be there monitoring their bus station and trying to help those people into shelters or into a place where they can, they don't find themselves on the streets. We need to continue that partnership with the county, and that's really an important place to start. But again, you know, as we try to work with the homeless situation, you know, we've been through many, you know, charrettes and meetings and conferences and, you know, and trying to understand best practices. I know the Alliance has been out to different cities around the country and have learned what other cities have tried to do, but the bottom line is, you know, funding for homes, trying to find places for people to, to shelter, providing services for mental, mental well-being, mental illness consultation, and, 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 what's the word I'm thinking of? And just helping people, you know, in their, trying to deal with mental illness, drug and alcohol addiction, these are all things that hopefully will help get people back on their feet. So if the state is contemplating helping the cities, trying to work with the homeless population, maybe having a conversation with the cities would be helpful, and maybe they could provide more funding towards trying to alleviate the situation.
Mayor, if I, if I may, I'd just like to add to that, thank you. I too have been reading a lot about this, and I'm actually encouraged by what I have been reading, and even people that are supporting the governor's initiatives that you might not think normally would be supporting. So I don't, I want us to be very careful as we move forward. This issue for me has risen to the number-one email on the list. My office, the most comments we get, in fact, just today, we're dealing with something in terms of underneath the La Solis Boulevard Bridge.
And 17th Street causeway.
Yes, and I'm, I'm just telling you that the homelessness issue has risen to the top of the heap, in terms of emails that my office gets, phone calls, text messages, conversations when I go to neighborhood association meetings. We really need to work really closely with the governor and the state on this, because I do read that some of the proposals do include funding for services that you've just mentioned. But I want, I don't want to see us go down a path of, of objection or confrontation. I don't want to get into a bridge versus tunnel situation on this. I really want to see us collaborate as much as possible on this, because we really have to make sure that the quality of life in Fort Lauderdale is not impacted by this issue. So whether it's mobilizing our brand-new homelessness task force, all of city staff working with our state representatives, working with all of the agencies, we have to take advantage of this proposal, because it really is the first time that we've ever seen a comprehensive proposal coming out of Tallahassee that really is trying to deal with this issue. And that also deals with, you know, all of our, our state attorney's office, the judges, everyone needs to be at the table on this. This has to be a comprehensive approach where everyone has buy-in, so that we can make sure that this does not get out of hand. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, I'll, I'll let you in on this as well, so thank you. Thank you for bringing that up, because it's also one of the hot-button issues in my district, between the intersection of federal and Oakland Park Boulevard at Target Shopping Center. I believe you've been copied on some of the ones from folks at the Galt, it's becoming an increasing problem out there. You know, I, I don't think it's quite reached the crisis level that folks out there are experiencing. I think it's just new to them and feels like a crisis. But that being said, it's certainly, it's certainly something that is starting to filter into all of our neighborhoods now. What used to be primarily a problem with just the downtown has become a citywide problem as time moves on. Part of that's a consequence of the efforts that we took out, honestly, to clear out Schrannahan Park, and some of it's just the larger growth in the homeless population that we're seeing nationwide. It's not just us here locally. The problem that I think we're going to have, and I think we all need to be cognizant of this, is that we're not going to be able to build our way out of this. You know, when I talk to folks that build affordable housing, they're telling me it's, it's anywhere upwards of $200,000 a door to build an apartment.
That's, that's cheap.
And that's, that's not counting the land, that's just, that's just construction. And so, you know, the fact of it is, we can't build enough housing to give to all the people that want a house. And we need to be mindful of that. There are communities that are trying some very creative solutions, whether it's tiny houses, whether it is container homes that are being converted into it, but all of this is going to require changes to our zoning, because we can't do any of this currently with our zoning. And it becomes a NIMBY issue, where folks simply don't want to address the necessity of more density related to affordable housing, because we're never going to get this done with existing zoning. You're even seeing this out in California, where they're changing the zoning throughout the state, because single-family residency zoning is exclusionary. And we're, we're, we're going to struggle getting this done, and again, we can't build our way out of this problem, and so we're going to have to come up with solutions. I applaud the governor's office and, and the legislature for trying to get creative, because frankly, we're not going to get there. We haven't gotten there yet, despite the billions and billions that are being spent nationwide. This is an intractable problem. So I hope this is, I hope this is at least a modest step towards alleviating some of the pressure on our neighborhoods.
Okay, so, and continuing along, there was one other thing I wanted to speak about. Oh, neighborhood master plans. So, and this also feeds into the comment regarding changing the zoning to accommodate additional housing. You know, it's just, it's a, it's a, it's a complicated issue, changing the zoning to allow for more dense, dense development, denser development in the single-family home neighborhoods, because as you know, we also suffer from a vacation rental problem in our city. And, you know, I'm concerned that if we allow additional rooms to be built, where it's right now, single-family homes are currently located, it's just inviting more opportunities for vacation rentals or Airbnbs to be located within our single-family home neighborhoods. So, so whatever we do has to be massaged in such a way that we discourage Airbnbs, but at the same time, allow for more construction to be built in single-family home neighborhoods that don't compromise the quality of life that those neighborhoods have come to enjoy. So I don't know the solution, but I do know that there is an opportunity here somewhere, and we just have to figure that out.
Mayor, could I, could I throw something out on that? So, so years ago, I used to be on the Broward Housing Partnership, along with former Commissioner Romney Rogers, and we attempted to establish a land trust that would be, consist of, basically a charter change that would allow us to, to set up a land trust. And, you know, the underlying philosophy behind that is the land trust owns the land, and it has to be used in perpetuity for affordable housing. It's a way to, to control that, because that house then can't be turned into an Airbnb, it can't be a vacation rental. So it, unfortunately, I don't think people in the community understood what we were trying to accomplish, and it's a rule in government that when people don't understand a charter referendum, they vote no, because no is always a safe solution. And it, it didn't pass at the time, but, you know, maybe that's a way of addressing this. We, we look at, at doing that again, creating a land trust, and, and we, we hold that land in perpetuity for the purposes of affordable housing. So again, I think there's some tools out there that we need to look at.
Okay, and that was it. So I have a couple of people signed up to speak, Ted and Sarah and Maggie Hunt.
Commissioners, my name is Ted and Sarah. I'll tell you one thing, if I had it to do all over again, I would create a firm that did studies, because, man, I could make a lot, a lot of money off the city of Fort Lauderdale, with all the studies and everything we have. You know, the one thing that, that I heard earlier about the garage on La Solis, you were calling it iconic, and, you know, we need to get the lights fixed on this iconic garage. Well, you know, I think the most iconic thing in Fort Lauderdale is the trees going down La Solis, which also doesn't have working lights, but we're ready to rip those out, and, and they're about as iconic as it gets in the city of Fort Lauderdale. But that's another subject. But the one thing on your priorities list that I am hearing a lot of in the River Oaks neighborhood, is there's nothing about dredging. I mean, we have all this great waterway, we're opening up the river so we can get these yachts from the western marinas to the east, but we have canals, in dead-end canals, that there's so much built-up sediment and rock on the bottom. If you're on the one end of the dead-end canal, you cannot get out most of the time of the day, you're dry, you're landlocked. So we need to somehow, we got a large, not only just marine industry, but a very large residential boating community that is dying, because they cannot get out on their boats, because these canals have just been years before we had anything.
Ted, 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 Ted.
Yes, sir.
You're aware, since you're a community activist, you know that, you know that the city made the attempt to work with landowners, property owners that have repairing rights, and to work with them in dredging these, these canals. The city did an estimate of what it would cost, and there was a certain number which the city alone could not afford. They asked to get the homeowners to chip in if they are indeed not able to navigate their vessels in and out of the waterways, and they all came at a meeting and protested with pitchforks and, and torches and said, don't you dare do that.
Yeah, the price was high, but actually, actually, on one of our aisles, right off 17th Street, that is being done as we speak.
All right, I just want you to be aware, where.
But I think, you know, maybe the city could, could help more. You know, don't put such of a burden on the residents themselves.
It was, it wasn't, it was a nominal amount compared to, you look, these houses are worth millions on the water, right? And we, I, I don't, I think the charge was hundreds, not thousands, to be able to, to, to participate in the program and to help, you know, balance the burden between the city and, and the property owner. And they came out and they just said they don't want to have anything to do with it, and we, you know, they were going to burn, burn down the, the city hall if we tried to do anything.
I think if we present it again and bring it up again, I think we can get better results. I mean, I think now, because now there, there, it's a crisis mode sometimes. I mean, you own a, you own a house on the water, you own a boat, you can't get out.
I'm not disagreeing with you. I thought, I, I look at some of these canals, you can, you can see to the bottom, two feet, three feet, especially along Idyllwild Drive, it's, you go, you, I mean, I don't know how some of those large boats are able to navigate in and out, but I'm just, I'm just saying that, you know, your point is very well taken. Maybe we should, we can revisit it and, and see, you know, what the temperature is of the community once again. Maybe certain areas are more willing to do it than others, but.
I think now more is, when you, when we presented it the first time, I think now is maybe a little bit more a desperation point, and maybe it'd be a better working arrangement.
Okay.
But I just think that we got to keep that in one of our priorities.
Well, to your credit, Ted, you know, we did have our goal-setting, it was one of the things that we did mention. I don't think it made it to the report, but we did mention dredging.
Yes, we did.
As you know, the port is federal, the, no, there's things that, the new river doesn't belong to us, but the little canals do. And that was brought up, you were there at the Marine Advisory, we touched upon that.
Yes, I was.
And afterwards, I think Phil Parcell, Marine Industries, mentioned that. Now, Mr. Mayor, they mentioned there could, there's federal and matching funds available for some of that stuff too, maybe a significant amount of money. We could look into ways to fund somebody's.
There is, there probably is money for that. Again, I don't recall all those details, but I do remember that when we did ask for some of the repairing, the repairing homeowners to chip in, you know, they didn't want to participate, so.
Could we look into funding opportunities? Maybe it's something we should be revisiting right now.
I think so.
Is that on our list, Laura? Let's get, we'll just add that to our list.
Yes. It was one of the things we presented but didn't make it to the final cut, but it is, it is something that I think is worth looking at.
And, and one last thing, but not least, is I would like to wish Commissioner Glassman a happy birthday, and no matter how old you are, you are still older than I am. I just want to make sure that, that is a well-known fact, please.
And hopefully, that will continue.
Yeah, happy birthday, Hufgrist.
Well, tomorrow.
All right, your time is up, Ted. Goodbye. Thank you for participating. Maggie?
Thank you for putting some cultural tourism on your priority list. I don't know who is responsible for that, but for thank you.
The cultured members of the commission put it out, yeah.
Also, I'd like to, for you to consider Lauder Trail as an economic driver, as the Beltline has been to Atlanta, to the tune of $8.2 billion in private development as of the end of 2020, which is a long time ago, and it continues to grow. That's from the Atlanta Beltline webpage. But it can't be the economic driver with just paint on a road marking a bike lane. It either has to be away from the road, like the Lauder Trail plan, where they have it along the railroad bed, and, or if it's on a really busy place, you know, you need a nice-looking barrier. And it's also, you know, helps alleviate car traffic. There's much more economic benefit from Lauder Trail than investing in tourist segments that are already very mature in development and so have less upside. The second thing in their priorities I'd like, I'd like to ask you to consider is, as we have more residential units coming online every year, and our property values increase, and then we have more tax income, I'd like to consider maybe contributing more than we have considered in the past for the new water treatment plant from some of those funds or from the general fund. I know other cities are in the same boat, as far as expenses are, but I think we should strive to do better than that, than other cities, to make living here more affordable, because this is an important part of affordable housing. Once you get in there, you got to be able to afford it, and we have these huge insurance costs now and yada, yada. So thank you.
Okay, you're welcome, thank you.
Could I, could I comment? I know I'm talking a lot this, no, you could stay here for one second. I just want to touch upon something that's dear to my heart. I think Lauder Trail is making a commitment for that is a huge thing. The mayor and I had spoken about, you know, putting a financial priority upon that, making this bike safety and bike-friendly community. You mentioned something about, about the right-of-way by the railroad track. I don't know if you mentioned, but you alluded to it. And Ben, Ben is still here, right? You don't have to come up, but I just want to.
Yeah, it's on the map.
We, we mentioned that a few times, about doing that, and I mentioned that again in our meeting, and I mentioned it once again when I met with Bright Line a couple days. meeting, and I mentioned it once again when I met with Bright Line a couple of days ago. And I think that we should, we should revisit that, but if we're going to be doing a bridge versus tunnel to do all these, a ton of money into bike lanes right now, and two years later, they rip it up when they do the bridge and tunnel, timing is everything. That being said, when I spoke to Ben, one of the thoughts is when they do finally decide bridge, tunnel, river crossing, built into that plan, I would like them to add bike lanes or right-of-way. I know there's a cost of, of using that land has gone up dramatically, but that's something I think we should consider. When we do do the crossing, blend in bike trails along the right-of-way when they do, they do come up with whatever plan they come up with.
Yeah, great point, thanks.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to business four, update on the flood recovery.
Yeah, we have staff that has prepared the latest update with figures. I believe Ashbrit is also going to discuss as well their findings.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Alan Dodd, Public Works Director, while everybody's coming up. What we're going to do today is give you a very brief, high-level overview of the FEMA recovery efforts since the April 2023 flooding event. The presentation will be involving a couple of folks, starting with Jonathan Clark, who is the Vice President for Thompson Consulting, who has been with us since the April floods, helping us to develop the projects and helping us to maximize reimbursements coming from FEMA. He'll be walking you through the projected reimbursements to date and explaining what the city plans are to work through the FEMA 428 alternate project funding program. After him will be Jason Fawcett, who's the Vice President for Ashbrit, along with Brian Thomason, who's a Senior Vice President for Ashbrit. They've been helping us with boots on the ground as we remove debris from City Hall and started on the path for decommissioning. And they will give you an update on the current activities regarded to the decommissioning and how we're moving closer to demolition of that building. We're continuing to work on finalizing the scope for demolition of City Hall, which involves conducting an environmental study and preparing a health and safety plan, a risk mitigation plan, and a number of other methods, efforts to protect the properties around that building involving de-watering and safety protocols. And then, as we finish up, what we'd like to talk a little bit about is reminding you of the efforts for remediation of asbestos, lead, BCBs, and other items in the building that are all part of the safety protocols and the requirements associated with the below-ground mitigation backfilling the property so that it can be prepared for reutilization for another building at some point in time. So, at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Clark to start talking about the FEMA requirements related to the demolition.
All right, good afternoon. All right, I'm Jonathan Clark, with Thompson Consulting. We've been assisting the city since the April flood event, boots on the ground. Make it very short and sweet for you guys. What we got here is just a presentation about what projects we actually submitted to FEMA. Working with the city staff and their partners such as Ashbrit and WSP, we were able to advance several-year projects early on in the recovery. We're currently projecting an overall estimated recovery from $70, $75 million is what we're projecting. That includes hazard mitigation. This slide represents the currently, the amounts currently submitted to FEMA, which is, right, $38.5 million. The city debris removal slide, sorry, the citywide debris removal, the still project you see up there, it's written on estimates. That's going to be one, it's going to be an ongoing project, so that number will change in the future. It may require some time extensions to complete that project. The City Hall protective measure and citywide debris removal, this listed at 1.5, have been completed, and we're just waiting for FEMA to continue their review process and award you those funds. Walk you through on this slide what we're currently working on. The top box reflects a few of the projects that we placed in the FEMA 428 project. The 428 process allows us to take liking-kind cost estimates along with any associated eligible hazard mitigation scope and reassign this funding to an alternate project that may be more beneficial to the public. This funding is capped and is estimated at cost less any insurance and cost share obligations. Should the 428 projects have an underrun, the city can reassign those funds for other eligible items, such as equipment, hazard mitigation, or training. And any overruns will be the responsibility of the city. The 13, the 13.2 million that you see in there for City Hall was a, was pulled from a contract estimate provided by WSP, the city's contracted, contracted engineering firm. With that scope, they also, excuse me, they also provided the other costs you see up here with Oswald Park, Mills Pond, and Morton and Carter Park. So, they provided those cost estimates as the baseline for us to do these repairs. Carter Park is currently projected to have a phased repair approach, with the first phase being focused on a boxing gym, track and field, and the stadium. And here's a revamp of the alternate procedures program, just trying to break down a little bit as I went through to it. You'll see at the bottom the example, like, you'll see the repairs, the baseline estimate, plus the hazard mitigation and the proposed estimates. That's how we come to that 13.2, and then you'll subtract any insurance that you may receive and the cost share that's required. And with that, I'll open the floor to Mr. Jason Fawcett at Ashbrit.
Mayor, excuse me, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Commission, my name is Jason Fawcett, Vice President of Operations. For Ashbrit, just wanted to provide a quick overview of some of the recent activities you've seen in the northwest corner of the parking garage, also concurrent with what's been taking place at City Hall currently or just recently. Currently, we have established a new fence perimeter in conjunction with the fence that the city has established for safety of the facility, also for protection and safety of equipment inside the work zone around City Hall. We've removed all the road marking, parking signs, all the signs on the exterior of the facility that have been turned over to city staff for reuse, recycling, or what may be, what they want to use for them in the future for. We've also removed all the artifacts, concurrent interior of the building, plaques, plaques on the exterior of the building, the actual lettering on top of the building as well, as you can see in the photograph there in the center, that states City Hall. Furthermore, very important, the last two items that have been completed, the relocation of the Berlin Bear, we have pulled the Berlin Bear and preserved it and turned it over to the city's contractor for storage and preservation. We've also begun the process through the city forestry, or city forester and Ashbrit with the root pruning that's taking place for the 9/11 tree of life that is going to be relocated over to the city's fire training center. That process is quite lengthy and takes several months. Some of our future plans to kind of continue the process to get, get the city in a position to get to the next phase would be to re-energize the power feed in the building, get some, some elevators back working to, to then lead into the removal of household, the household hazard waste that's in the building, debris that's in the building that has to be removed. Also, another function that would take place in this is also the removal of Freon and any type of, again, hazmats that are inside the building. Plans for hiring and bringing in some licensed contractors to cap sewer, dismiss and cap the gas lines, and the city plumbing and water inside the building is underway, and then also plans to continue to work with FPNL to remove the vault that is in the basement area as well. So, with that, that is the conclusion of, of what I have.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Chris Nelson has signed up to speak.
Mayor, just curious, has the entire building been emptied of all furniture and fixtures? Is that, is the building stripped of everything?
Yes, everything that was usable or salvageable, we have put it in storage.
Okay, thank you.
So, what's, so I didn't hear what next steps were. What's the timeline on demolition and so forth?
Anywhere between now and August. We're looking at having everything finalized because of the hazmat, because of the lead and the asbestos. We have to plan for all that, and.
Can't just push a button and have it implode?
We, I wish, but Melissa will, will share more specifics.
I'm a shorty, I got to move it down. Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Commissioners.
Just as powerful.
Thank you, sir. Melissa Doyle with Public Works. As part of the 428 process that we're applying for with the aid of Thompson Consulting, that will allow the city the ability to be able to move forward with demolition itself. The 428 project must be approved by FEMA in advance of demolition beginning.
Okay.
So, what Ashbrit is currently working on is removing any of the hazardous materials from the building, which would pose a threat if it were to continue to stay abandoned and would need to be removed anyway as a part of that demolition. Our goal is to hopefully have everything ready. We do have pre-existing and pre-positioned demolition contracts at our disposal.
Okay.
So, once we have approval, we will be moving forward with getting estimates from those companies and making that decision to move forward with the demolition. We would love to have that happen as soon as August or September, ideally prior to our prime hurricane season, but again, that's dependent upon that 428 approval, and that's at the federal level.
Okay, great. Anyone have any questions, Melissa?
I just want to reiterate, so you're saying that maybe August or September in terms of demolition?
Most optimistically, Commissioner, it would be August or September, but again, I will reiterate, it's dependent on, it's dependent on the federal government and FEMA approving that 428. And I will say, they have been very engaged and are very actively pursuing the approval of the city's projects, and we are optimistic that that will continue.
That'd be great, because it is a bit of an eyesore right now.
It is.
And it would be nice to just take care of that and then maybe at least make something attractive. Like, we can have those discussions later on, I'm sure, as a commission, what we'd like to see on that corner, but it's such a pivotal corner, and I think we need to do something that shows the community and also that neighborhood that, you know, we understand what this looks like. And I would just also say, I really do love what AMCO did around the Seastown Corner with artists, so that it's not your typical chain-link fence, it doesn't look industrial, it doesn't look lousy, it's, it's kind of creative, and I love that they brought together at least 10 artists to do that entire corner around Sunrise and Federal. Just, again, just brainstorming a little bit here that we can do something nice there, we can do something special and not make it look like your typical, you know, construction site.
Understood, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
What's the estimated demolition cost?
So, WSP is the engineering firm that the city has a contract with.
It's a lot more than we had thought, I heard.
It is, and that's largely because of the methodology that we would need to use to be able to demolish the building. The recommended protocol is to go floor by floor. And typically, in a number of demolition projects, you would see where they would bring in like a big crane, a wrecking ball, and, you know, everybody's like, can we blow it up? Fortunately, or unfortunately, this building was incredibly well-constructed, meaning that it's, it's a solid concrete building. So, number one, we're in a downtown and an urban environment where we have a number of safety issues that we want to make sure that we're addressing, and that's the reason why we're taking the time to make sure that we have that risk mitigation plan. But number two, our engineers are all in consensus that it makes sense to do it from the top down and to be careful with the way that we're moving through the actual demolition project. I'll also note that because our basement is subterranean, meaning it's below the water table, there are going to be some significant challenges related to what we refer to as de-watering or moving the water off the site in order to be able to remove the concrete backfill and then cap it, which is the direction we received from commission, so that a decision could be made about the final determination for the project. So, what WSP did, Commissioner Sturman, was provided us with an estimate and gave us a contingency for that de-watering piece that frankly, we won't know until we kind of get into it. And that's roughly about $13 million at the very, very top. And you'll notice that what we've asked for as far as the FEMA 428 funding on that slide is 13.2. So, to reiterate Mr. Clark's feedback to you today, if we don't use all of those funds, we simply reapply those funds for a different project, and that would be something that would be determined at the direction of the city manager and certainly the commission.
Okay.
Mayor, I just had one question I wanted to ask of both Melissa and city manager, and again, this is thinking ahead, but have we been doing photographic work on the site now as we've been doing what we've been doing in terms of just shoring up mitigation? I'm asking this because regardless of how people feel about the building itself, I really do want to make sure that going forward, whenever, whatever we do as a new city hall, we have to have something that pays homage to this building and its historical importance to the city of Fort Lauderdale. We have to have photographic essays. We have to start thinking about working with the Historical Society, pulling information in terms of the architect, pulling information in terms of the style of architecture, pulling information in terms of what that neighborhood looked like when that was really, I mean, everyone thought, oh, my God, look at the size of this building. There's a lot of history, is what I'm saying, and I want to make sure that we do the right thing in terms of some sort of little exhibition and whatever replaces this building so that we are paying tribute to the building and its importance to the history of our city.
Commissioner, we did photograph and video logged the, the building inside and out. We preserved the moment in time that we exited so that this could be available for generations to come, also for future planning and for future reference. It's important to memorialize what, what we had there at once, at one point. So, we do have footage, and certainly we'll make it available for anyone to see it as well.
No, that'd be great. I did want to just point out that years ago, when the county was contemplating a new campus for a city hall, and there may be even in conjunction with the city, there, there are documents that explain that what was recommended for the first floor, actually, of a new city hall, or a county hall, whatever, was actually a museum, was actually something that worked to show the citizens our history. And I would love to just make sure that we continue that thought, even though we're doing this without the county now, we're doing our own thing. But I just think it's really important to make sure that we document. Obviously, we're not preserving the structure, but that doesn't mean that we can't document and make sure that we educate everyone in terms of its importance.
Yeah, actually, some of those discussions have been brought up in the reimagining City Hall discussions, whereas some, some of the stakeholders advise that they would like to see some type of museum, some type of reference to history. So, we do have some good artifacts, we have the bear, they're in storage. So, yeah, those opportunities will become available.
Okay, great. Thank you, Melissa, for your work on this, and thank you, Greg.
Any other questions? Is Chris Nelson here still? He left, okay. He had, he was the only one signed up to speak. Thank you so much. Moving on to the next item. Hold on, so my computer.
Today is Ben Rogers Day, I believe, right?
A Lauder Trail update.
Does that come with a proclamation tonight, Commissioner?
This is why.
Yes.
No. Don't push it.
If we can wait for the president.
If we can wait for the presentation to load. So Mayor, Commissioner, what I wanted to do today is just give an overview of Lauter Trail, where we're at today, a lot of the master planning efforts.
Sorry?
That, that took place, the acceptance of the master plan happened with the previous Commission. So just want to do a quick highlight on what Lauter Trail is, what we did to get to this point, and then talk about four efforts that we have ongoing. So the first thing, again, from a historical perspective, is that there was a working group that the Commission established back in 2018 that did a lot of the initial groundwork of what, where they want to see connections, what they would like the, the trail to look and feel like. And we took that ground, ground level work, we onboarded the PATH Foundation, which was a nonprofit in 2021, and tasked them with creating a master plan for the city. What started off as a kind of a small initiative led into a citywide master plan that said, here's a roadmap for the future, with the understanding that we wouldn't have the adequate funding at the time, but if we build this out for a long-term initiative, where we should look at putting the trail and the, and the branding, all the aspects to deliver a multi-use trail. We also, at that time, received $5 million as part of the park bond funding for this initiative, and we've been using that to do the master plan and some of the work that we'll talk about today. So the master plan process, again, was very inclusive. We had numbers of meetings, we had working groups, we had walking tours, we created an advisory panel that had stakeholders from different agencies, from city staff, from different departments, and also with neighborhood groups. We conducted numerous public meetings, some of them were in the heart of COVID, but we did our best to, to adapt to that. The illustrations that are up there now was kind of the final meeting we had, and I want to say we had over 150 people in participation, showing the importance of the trail to the community. And then ultimately, the City Commission accepted the plan for us to move forward with. So this, this slide just highlights, again, some of the deliverables from that. It, it has a map that shows what the Lauter Trail would be when, when fully built out, different color codes mean different, different things, and then some statistics on the left side that just show how many neighborhoods, how many parks and transit centers the, the trail is projected to connect into the future. But really, why we're here today is to give you an update on four efforts, to get feedback from the Commission, and to integrate anything at this point. On two of these efforts, we're in design now, we've received 60% design, and so we'll be, again, providing the consultant with direction on how to get us to the 100% design, so that we can ultimately construct these segments. So the first one is Mobility Hub to Carter Park. This started back in June of 2023. As I said, this is one that we have reached 60% design on. The initial construction cost is somewhere around $2.1 million, and you can see an illustration of the trail. Right now, if we had to fund it, we would be using park bond dollars. We are looking at grant opportunities to see if there's match or ways to leverage that, that, that funding. But right now, if the direction was to construct this as soon as possible, it would be from the park bond fund. The next one is what we're calling the Mobility Hub North. The Mobility Hub was a project that the MPO funded, and we completed that project. There was a remaining balance there, so we've worked with the MPO to amend that scope, to continue the, the trail that runs along the FEC tracks, one block to the north, so this will continue from Fourth to Fifth Streets. It, it is about $830,000 for construction, you can see some images of what the layout would look like. And again, we still have about $200,000 from the MPO for that effort.
Yeah.
Third one is Holiday Park to George English Park. This is good news, that we, we applied for a recreational trails grant from the state of Florida, and we were awarded it. So sometime in the next month or so, you'll see an agreement coming in front of the Commission for consideration to accept that grant and appropriate the funds. But this segment is estimated somewhere around $800,000 with a 50% match from that grant.
Ben, I'm sorry, just a question. How is it that some areas or grants are available for one portion and maybe not the others?
I, I think there's grant opportunities for a lot. What we did is we looked at what we had in design right now.
Okay.
And then we tried to figure out what the next key segments would be. And so assuming that a lot of grants are future years, not current year.
Okay.
We applied for this grant for a future year.
Thank you.
Yep.
Ben, what did, what year did you say that would be for Holiday Park to George English Park?
So this one, we'll be bringing the, the grant agreement sometime in the next month or two to Commission for Award, and then that would, once we appropriate the funds, then we could start the work. So we should be able to start design sometime in the next, conservatively, four to six months.
Okay, great.
And then that would take six to seven months. So the good news on this grant is we applied for it for future years, and we, we had an opportunity to receive almost immediate funding as a result of it.
Excellent. That will make all of the pickleballers really happy, they can march back and forth between George English and Holiday Park.
Secondary signage, pickleball way.
Bike, walk, whatever. Carl, make sure you let them all know. That'll make them all very happy. I could just see that, back and forth between Holiday Park and George English. Terrific, thank you.
Can I, can I just say something? See this picture right here? This kind of defeats a little bit of what the purpose of the Lauter Trail was supposed to be. These are sharrows, right? So, so people riding bikes are dodging cars. The whole point of Lauter Trail, keep this in mind, was to create a peaceful, unobstructed, protected environment away from vehicles, so that people could rollerblade or ride a bike or walk without having to worry about the intrusion of vehicular traffic. So, you know, as you consider the pathways for Lauter Trail, please keep in mind that we, we're trying to get away from this sharrows concept, which I think is, is, you know, death-defying at, at best, and, and I think that, you know, try to design this Lauter Trail, keeping that concept in mind.
Absolutely. I think there's some points in Lauter Trail where the right of way is so restricted that you'll have segments like this, but the goal, and I've provided that feedback to the consultant as well, is that we've got to figure out a way to divide and create a separate environment for the trail.
Right, because a rollerblader can't, a rollerblader can't use this.
I had this exact same thought when I looked at this picture, I can't agree with you more.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
And then the last segment is, is connecting Flag River Greenway to the Holiday Park. This one is also at 60% design, about a million two to construct, and, and no, and if we did construction funding now, it would be through the parks bond, which would deplete all of the, the funding in that account if we did everything with, with existing funds. I will say on this project, on this segment, the Seerstown project is along the corridor, the YMCA, and also the, the entrance to Holiday Park with the Parker and the Panthers. So the Seerstown development, their DRC plans right now on the north side of Northeast Ninth Street incorporate a cycle track, a sidewalk, landscaping, and lighting that, that align with the Lauter Trail vision, and that would go from US One to Northeast Fifth Terrace. We've had some conversations with the Panthers and, and Parker about what the entrance on Holiday Park looks like, and as recently as a week or two ago, I met with the YMCA to understand what their vision of their development is with our trail, to figure out the synergies and, and where the trail would, would best fit. So we have a lot of conversations going on right now with some of the other agencies outside of the city, to either construct as part of a development project, or to, to correlate our projects and ultimate vision.
And Ben, just to continue that conversation, because I have been having conversations with everyone at Aimco with regards to the Seerstown corner, I've had the conversations with the Panthers with regards to Holiday Park, as well as the YMCA. How often are we meeting with these people? How often are we coordinating those efforts? Because this is really key. I've even had conversations with the Aimco folks, with Seerstown, about a possibly elevated walkway over Federal Highway. There's a real need to have that connectivity on both sides of Federal as people turn towards downtown. It's going to be busy with the Seerstown, well now, they like to have it called, I think, 901 North or 901 N, but we, we need to make sure that we are really moving forward, so that we're not doing our thing in isolation, and that they're doing their thing. We have to make sure that it's coordinated, because I, I think all of those entities want to make sure that there is that safe, safe connectivity on both sides of the street. It's really important, and I just want to make sure, are we actually just meeting once in a while, having conversations once in a while, or are you guys setting a schedule that gets us to the point that we need to be with regards to both sides of the street?
Yeah, so I think the first thing is we got, got it incorporated into the DRC process, right? So that is, that's substantial to have them develop that on our behalf. As for the, the crossing of US One, we've had some meetings with FDOT, we've talked about a scramble light for now, with the lights programmed, where people can cross it all different ways. And I think where we're at now is at 60% design, is where we can go have substantial conversations with these organizations, because now we have drawings on, on a piece of paper that we can reflect on and navigate through.
Okay, and again, I just want to stress how important that is. I did recently have a meeting with FDOT and all of these stakeholders, because we are talking about some really nice median experiences as people crawl, curve around towards downtown on Federal from Sunrise. We've talked about public art installations of significance on that corner. So I, I just want to make sure that everybody is coordinated in these discussions. That is such a pivotal corner, that really is going to be a gateway to downtown for people traveling on Sunrise, both east and west, as they turn south on Federal. So I, it's so pivotal, and I just want to make sure that we're not just having, you know, haphazard or once-in-a-while conversations, but I want to make sure that we're on a schedule, that we're on a timeline, so all of this is coordinated and that it, you know, it bears fruit at the end.
Yeah, and we also held some public meetings in October to share the plans with the community. We had one, I think, in District Three, and then one held in District Two, based off of the two main projects that we're in design for.
Is there a plan for a pedestrian bridge of, right over by the Seerstown? Was that, was that correct?
It's, there's still conversations about how to cross Federal Highway. There has been talk about a pedestrian bridge.
How about a pedestrian?
The developer, the developer was contemplating maybe donating something like that in recent conversations that we've been having, so.
How about an undercut, maybe, underneath Federal?
A tunnel?
Wouldn't have to be that deep. And it sounds crazy, but they know, this actually.
Are you in record for a tunnel now?
That might not be, it's not crazy, I don't know, maybe it is.
Well, I think the developer, we've been having conversations with, with Aimco, so let's keep, let's, let's put that on, on the back shelf right now, and we'll see where we can take that. But we need to move this meeting forward, it's almost five o'clock, and we got still a number of items to talk about. Thank you so much, Ben.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. Okay, this is Business Six, the lawsuit challenging the Form Six. Who asked that that be put on the agenda?
Commissioner?
Is there anyone that wants to discuss this?
I just would like us to, we've never talked about it, and I just keep reading about it in the newspaper, I read about all these officials that are resigning around the state, I see that there is this lawsuit. I had requested some more information from the city attorney's office, so that we can, if people don't want to discuss it, that's okay, but I just found it interesting in the news to read about it and to also see that Weiss-Sarota has filed a class action, I believe, looking for some relief prior to this form taking effect, I guess July, is it July one, or July one? So, you know, it's up to all of you, I just wanted to make sure that everyone's aware of it, and that we do have 18 cities in Broward County on this class action, and I believe almost 30 elected officials. If folks are fine with the form, that's okay, too. I just wanted to make sure that the public was aware of it and that we also had the opportunity to discuss it. Thank you.
Okay. I personally, the only thing that would be embarrassing is people will see how little I do have, so I think, I think that.
Oh, man, no one believes that.
So anyway, you know, it is what it is. I mean, I don't want to be, I don't want to be part of a team that's looking to, to discourage full disclosure and transparency, so I'm not, I don't want to spend any more city money on, on this lawsuit. Whatever results, you know, it's not, our involvement is not going to impact the, the conclusion of that lawsuit, so was, does anyone else have any thoughts on that? Do we all just leave it the way it is? What do you think, Vice Mayor?
I'm on the side of transparency, so I don't have any interest of joining a class action suit, spending more money. I'm one of the ones always say, why are we spending money? And I don't see a reason to spend money on this particular one.
Okay. All right, we have a few people sign up to speak. Jim Lapre, James, are you here?
He had to leave.
He had to leave, okay. Charlotte, Rostrom?
Ah.
And Chris Nelson, you're not here.
Hello, Charlotte.
Okay, so Charlotte's the only one who signed up to speak.
She works for District Press.
I'll give you three minutes since the other two didn't show up. Underneath the microphone, underneath the microphone.
Press here.
This is new. Very nice, these buttons are to time me?
Yes.
And this is a little hook come and carry me away? All right.
Just a person, a person will do that.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I just wanted to come and let you know that I am for Form Six as a former elected official and as a candidate running in the next election. My husband, John, was on the county commission for 20 years, he always had to fill out full disclosure and full transparency. It's very important that the public know that our elected officials are fully engaged in full transparency and full disclosure. It just brings a level of honesty between you and your constituency that I think is very important. So from what I'm hearing so far, the resolution that's in here, you're probably not going to vote on. If you were going to vote on it, when would you vote on it?
No, we're not, we're not, we're not.
You're not gonna, so the backup, what we have in the backup is, you're just gonna forget it.
We're not interested in participating.
Educational, it's educational.
That's, okay, that's exactly what I came here to hear in person.
We'll see how much influence you had on this.
And I realize the attorneys, they are making their way around, trying to get cities to be involved, but there's almost, almost, almost 400 cities in Florida, and so they don't have a large percentage of everybody right now. So I really, I really commend you, and thank you very much for taking a stand on disclosure and transparency. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
And Charlotte, happy belated birthday from yesterday, hope you had a wonderful day.
Oh, that's right.
Thank you.
Happy birthday.
Yes, we are, we have so much in common. Thank you.
Okay, all right. By the way, I don't think county commissioners were required to file a Form Six.
They are, they are.
Actually, county commissioners, school board, judges, and state legislature all do Form Six.
And the governor.
Before, currently?
Currently, yeah.
So they're just making city, city commissioners.
Right, this is the only change.
I see.
You know.
Just municipal.
You know, I think, just philosophically speaking, I think the legislature made two mistakes when they passed this ordinance. One is, I think they should have made a prospective, because as, as has been pointed out, a number of elected officials have chosen to resign midterm, and I know that there are cities out there now that are struggling to get a quorum because of that. So I think that was, you know, probably an error on the part of the legislature, not to think that.
Unintended consequences.
Unintended consequences. You know, the other thing I think it would have been valuable is if they had put a threshold in terms of revenue for the city, because I think this is going to be burdensome on places like Lazy Lakes, you know, where they have the commission meeting in somebody's living room for all 40 residents. So, you know, I think, I think you're going to find for a lot of the smaller cities throughout the state, and there's a lot of them up in some of the north and central part of the state that are going to struggle with this. So I think it would have, it would have probably been better had they set a threshold of, you know, arbitrarily speaking, a $20 million or a $50 million budget relative to doing that. But, but I think the intent of transparency and full disclosure is absolutely worthwhile, so, yeah, I would not support, you know, us entering into the lawsuit as well.
Agreed. City Manager, is it possible, if Daphne could tell us, has there been any discussion in Tallahassee about tweaking this bill, being that some of the legislators from up north are probably hearing about all these resignations?
Daphne's here, so she can give us a little.
And that cities are having a hard time getting a quorum, or folks that are resigning? I don't, I don't know if there's been any of that discussion, thank you.
Mayor, while she's coming up, I wanted to clarify two things from Mr. Glassman. It's not going to be a class action lawsuit, hasn't been filed yet, it's for 18 cities throughout the state so far. Only a couple are relatively large cities, and, let's see, yeah, that's what, those two things.
Thank you.
It's 18 cities, but not in Broward.
I think the largest one is Delray maybe joined, and Coral Springs.
Coral Springs.
Coral Springs and Delray joined the lawsuit?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners, Daphne Sainville, Public Affairs. There has been no discussion about tweaking the legislation, it was heavily discussed when it was passed, and it was about transparency. The legislature says that, you know, as you file as an elected official, it's essentially a Form Six, and you're just duplicating the same form twice. And that was their justification and intent, it was transparency. So the unintended So the unintended consequences about members or council members resigning is to them saying that they have something to hide, so that's why they don't want to file.
Understood. Thank you for that.
Well, those people in the legal profession also have, they're in a quandary because we're not allowed to really disclose clients, so, and, so, anyway, I'll have to deal with that.
There was that, and also it was interesting to see that some of the people that resigned said that they felt that in today's climate, they just felt that disclosing the information that's required might actually be, well, I guess it would, it could harm them in some way in terms of safety. I mean, there are people now that redact information from campaign treasury reports and other things. They don't put their address on it. They're allowed to do that. They, they redact things all over the place. So that's why I think that was also another argument that I had read.
Okay. All right, let's move on. We have just a short period of time now to conclude this meeting, so let's begin with Commissioner Herbst on commission reports.
Thank you, Mayor. As you know, typically I don't talk too much about events that go on in the district, but you, you brought up one that I think is well worth mentioning. So we did have that fundraiser up at Founder Shooting Club, and that was for the Fraternal Order of Police's foundation, and it was a very well-tended event. Our chief of police was there, you stopped by, number of members of the FOP were there. And again, it was a great event, you know, we talked about, we talked about suicide prevention, we talked about some of the other programs that they put on for, for members of our community, and we also raised a substantial amount of money for the Jack Lekinsky Foundation. So I was pleased to be able to go there and participate and recognize the folks that showed up and helped make that event a success.
All right, great, I agree with you.
Thank you.
It was a great time.
Yep. Onto some other things, though.
Except the speakers were a little loud, but.
They were, they were. They were a little enthusiastic. What I usually like to use my time for is to bring items to the commission that I think I'd like us to take a look at and focus on going forward, and so I do have a couple of things that I'd like to talk about. Some of you may have received a request from Gina Ellis about potentially putting a sign on the top of Kenny Tunnel that would reference Los Olas Riverwalk. I don't know what the thought might be about that. I think it would be advantageous for us to attract attention to that. I just wanted to see what the, what the thoughts of the commission might be about that.
Well, assuming the tunnel repairs are finished within our lifetime, I think that the, I think that the graffiti incident brought attention to the opportunity to put something there.
Correct.
And, and so if it's, I think maybe we should circulate this subject to the neighborhood, like the Downtown Civic Association, as well as those connected to the Riverwalk Trust, to see what the best opportunity would be. Again, I don't like a lot of signage because I think it's visual pollution, because I think just the structures in itself create an architectural feature along with landscaping, which is, you know, and to put another sign out there, I mean, if it's done in a very decorative or creative way, maybe that might work, but.
Well, that's what I was thinking, because I know you had remarked that perhaps it would be a good location for a mural, and I'm thinking that, you know, we could combine those two. A mural with, with a designation of place would probably work together very well because there's not going to be much decorative that we're going to have as you drive into the tunnel. To your point, there's not going to be landscaping. So if we were going to do anything there, and again, you know, building on your idea of a mural up there to cover up where the graffiti currently sits, you know, incorporating something that, that tells folks when they're going onto the river where they are.
Where they are.
I think might be a good idea.
Okay.
Second thing, and this is a, this is a procedural thing for us, there have been times that I've observed when we have brought items on as walk-on items at the end of the evening that were never discussed during the day. So traditionally, when we're going to have a walk-on item, we bring it up, the commission talks about it, we get to a consensus, we ask the attorney's office to prepare a resolution or a motion for us to discuss at the evening meeting, and then we bring it on. But there have been several instances that I've observed where something is just brought up at the end of the night. And I don't think that's fair for our residents when we discuss items of importance that have never been on the agenda. And so I'd like us to consider adopting a policy that says that walk-on items must be discussed at a conference meeting first. Again, I think this is, this is a way of enhancing, as we were talking about, transparency. It's about making sure that our residents know what's going to be on the agenda. If people leave during the course of the meeting because they don't know something substantive is going to come up at the end of the meeting, they're shocked then when they read about it in the paper the next day. So I think it would be a way for us to improve our openness, our transparency, our communications to the community.
So usually when the item comes up is when we have discussion, but to, but to your point, people don't know that it's coming up until the end of the meeting, which could be late into the night. So what if, now, I usually announce at the beginning of the meeting if there is a walk-on item, but I don't discuss what it is.
Usually, but not always, that's correct. And I, and I think we need to formalize this. I think we, as a commission, should adopt the policy that would then be, you know, binding on us about how we conduct our business.
So, all right, so we shall look into that.
Yep, it's an item for discussion. I'm not, I'm not suggesting we need to decide that today. But I'd like for us to consider this and, and maybe the city manager and the city attorney can bring back a recommendation about how we can go ahead and do that.
Do we have any walk-on items tonight?
I, I don't believe we do, but.
None. Just asking.
I, I don't have one, so I'll just leave it at that.
Okay.
Another item, you have all seen the report that came out presumably, and one of the things that was noted, and I'm not getting into the context of that report, other than the fact that, I, I think one of the things that was clear to me is that we don't have a code of conduct for the commission, and I think we need to explore this.
We in the Supreme Court of the United States, so.
Yes, exactly.
We're a good company.
Right, we, we decide for ourselves what we think is appropriate. And I think we need to take a look at this. I, I found a rather robust one, for example, from St. John's County for the St. John's County Commission, and they've got, I think it's a roughly 60-page document. So I'd like us to think about a code of conduct that governs how we interact with ourselves, amongst ourselves, with the general public, and towards employees. I think it's important that we establish rules of decorum that, that we all agree to.
Okay. Can you forward that to us?
Absolutely. I'll, I'll send it to the city manager and let him disseminate that to the city attorney.
Do they have enforcement provisions in there, too?
You know, I, I don't know, and I'm not sure that we could actually create any enforcement other than censure as just an expression of our disapproval. I, you know, I know right now in Riviera Beach, the city commission up there has petitioned the governor to remove one of their city commissioners for violations of decorum. I don't know that we want to go that route, but certainly I think just us agreeing on rules of behavior is something that I think would be valuable.
Okay, good idea.
And last item that I want to bring up is several years back, you may recall, because you were on the commission at the time, Mayor, we relaxed the restrictions on sexual offenders on the advice of the previous city attorney, and as I understand it, none of the other cities in the county did. So what has been the outcome of that is that Fort Lauderdale, and in particular certain spots within District 1, have become a dumping ground for sexual, homosexual offenders. They're congregating at the Walgreens on Federal and 26th, they're congregating at, at the Target Shopping Center up on Federal and Oakland, and this is becoming problematic. I have members of the community that are reaching out to me because they're constantly getting notifications of new sexual offenders coming into the neighborhood, and they're using Walgreens as the address for, you know, to, to meet with their probation officers. It's unacceptable to me that, that that's the case. So I'd like us to investigate, going back to our previous standards, consistent with, with what the other cities in Broward County are doing. I, I don't want us to have a more relaxed approach and, and potentially make Fort Lauderdale, again, as.
A depository.
Well, as we find out with the homeless problem, they're arrested in other parts of the county, they're transported down to the jail, they're released immediately, and then they stay here. And something similar is occurring now with the homosexual offenders where they're told to go to Fort Lauderdale. And it's unacceptable to me that this is becoming a problem that my neighborhoods are having to deal with simply because we are less strict in our application of the law.
Wait, can, can you, my, my understanding, let me just start again. I think his point is well taken. I don't know, I don't remember the history, but perhaps you can come back to us. Do you have something you want to report on? DeWine?
I just need some clarification because I'm getting text messages now. What offenders were just mentioned that were told to go to Fort Lauderdale?
Sexual.
The homeless, sexual. No, I want to hear, I, I don't, that's not what people are telling me was just said.
Homeless, sexual offenders, homeless.
Okay. Homeless.
Sexual offenders.
Sexual offenders.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
But DeWine has a, just for you to, to understand what, what we did and why it was going.
Thank you.
Real quick.
So in 2019, the state legislature amended an ordinance dealing with residency and created a new definition for transient residency and temporary residency. And so we amended our code to add those definitions to the code, and in addition to that, the office thought at the time that we had a restriction in the code with regards to bus stops and that the distance requirements from those bus stops conflicted with what could be deemed as, well, I'm not sure what the, the conflict was, but that was the only other thing that was adjusted in that code, was removing that restriction from bus stops.
Removing what restriction?
There was a distance requirement from a number of listed specific locations, and bus stops were among those, and that was removed at the advice of council at the time. So we were investigating the other municipalities as to how they address the state law, to our knowledge, but, but we haven't confirmed that we believe that they have also adjusted their codes to address that change in definition, but we are looking into that and we'll get back to the commissioner and commission on that issue.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for bringing that up, Commissioner Herbst.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll start with the activities and the events that I was able to attend since our last commission meeting. On, actually on Monday, the 22nd, January 22nd, I met with the social service organization, OIC, with Whitney Lamar and SFL Banking. They're beginning a banking program that is basically eight weeks of training that is targeting ages between 18 to 24. In this program, they're grooming to interview and match those individuals with banking institutions such as Chase, TD Bank, and Bank of America. They have a program for the summer, matching youth with those people working in those different fields, offering employment assistance, also case management that will also deal with mental health and housing. All this is through this one program as well. Within that course, there is a three-week program that also includes fiber optic training. Also, moving forward from there, if they're able to move forward from the training, there are bank initiatives, which is a two-month role with functioning as a bank tailor, and also offering a technology program for cybersecurity. This is open to the city of Fort Lauderdale as well as different cities that are in the mindset of looking to offer opportunities to young people in the age of 18 to 24. Very positive conversation, and it is a great opportunity when we share this information for that demographic to receive an opportunity for additional training. Really impressed with the presentation that was given. On Tuesday, the 23rd, and also Wednesday, the 24th, there was an annual two-day event which is entitled Infant Scholar, excuse me, Infinite Scholarship Fair. It was held at the YMCA, the LA Lee Branch and Miza Family Center. We were, I'm gonna say blessed, I'm gonna be myself. We were blessed to see 27 universities, colleges that came onsite that were prepared and did give opportunity to our students in the city and also the countywide that came over to receive an opportunity for scholarships and admittance to college onsite. I had asked for a clip to be shared from the event. Did IT receive that information? If you could show that short video for us, please. This is actually footage from the day of the event with the students. I was also looking for the footage. There was another footage where they were actually talking to the students, but great turnout. There was 1,000-plus students that attended this event. Again, it was held at the YMCA, the LA Lee Branch, Miza Center. We, the city, did partner this year with the YMCA along with the Broward County School Board. Jeff Holden is school board member for District 5. He was able to provide transportation for the students from their schools over to the YMCA. What I'm really excited about, again, there was 27-plus universities, colleges that were there. This is an opportunity where our youth are able to talk with the college admitting officer, and they do not have to pay for an application fee. They are offered admittance on the spot, and then also monies that are given. In this particular event held here in the city of Fort Lauderdale, $16.1 million in scholarships was issued within our city. So I'm gonna say y'all clap for that. That is amazing, and I'm so grateful and honored that Infinite Scholars, that program that they have decided to continue to work within the city of Fort Lauderdale. This is a program that has been in our county, in our city for, I'm gonna say at least eight to 10 years. Before I was, of course, elected to this position as a stakeholder in the community, this was one of the events that I was hands-on with, making sure that they would continue to come to our area. And at one point, the participation, being able to get the information out was very, very slow, and it wasn't being accomplished. But this year, we were able to get the information out. And then I have to let you know as well that with the number of cities that Infinite Scholars visit throughout, they usually start in August and they go through January. They are come from as far north as Detroit, Michigan, coming down basically the east coast of the U.S. I don't have here the number of cities that they visit. However, our event placed third among all the cities that they have visited. So this was a great impact on our community, and I look forward to us as a city continuing to work to make sure that we offer the opportunity to our young people where they're able to receive the, some are full, full president scholarships, some are paying for books, dormitory, and that gap that some of them need. So this is a great opportunity. So, I, I'm really excited about that. Also, on the 24th, Wednesday, the 24th, I attended the Contuminal Care Board Meeting. That afternoon, I attended the Good Jobs, Great Cities Initiative Site Visit. At our last meeting, we had representation from the National League of Cities and also from the U.S. Department of Labor. And they were here to discuss that initiative that we are involved in, Good Jobs, Great Cities. And we were able to have a roundtable discussion, giving accolades to Daphne Sanville, Public Affairs, and her staff. They did an amazing job of putting together that roundtable, having that opportunity to discuss what this Good Jobs, Great Cities would look like. At that meeting, we had also representatives from Broward County, the Broward County School Board, some of the colleges that are gonna be involved. But, the conversation, we talked about the basic needs of being able to accommodate those who will be involved with this initiative, given that opportunity to be, receive training. So, of course, we, we know across the board, basic need is childcare and transportation. We talked about the journey map for jobs where the childcare would be nearby, career fairs that include initiatives for tuition reimbursement. We talked about materials that are needed to develop a recruitment for healthcare and other industries as well as those industries dealing with waste management and careers in water treatment. Broward County does have a program that pays for, by the school, for $1,500 per child. That was a conversation of how we could incorporate that opportunity with our initiative that we're implementing here in the city. Working on skills that are transferable, so when we're training these individuals, it's not just one area, but they'll be able to work in different areas as well. Working with career paths, recruiting interns for full-time jobs, and also apprenticeships, looking at the technology, public works and engineering, and getting employees to build funds in their budget for hiring permanent full-time employees. And then, of course, discussing how to create a centralized database. It was a very productive meeting and I'm looking forward to the next meeting being scheduled. This is also a great opportunity for our city. On Thursday, the 25th, I attended the Greater Fort Lauderdale Chambers Breakfast. At midday, I had a conversation with Matt Seko and some representatives of EVault. There was a conversation about a unsolicited proposal to bring a sport called padel or paddle. I may be pronouncing it without the accent, but there was a conversation about it possibly being an opportunity for the Mills Ponds area. So, there was a conversation. Is padel, P-A-D?
Oh, paddle ball.
No, not paddle ball.
No, it's right.
It's like a variation on pickleball.
Exactly.
Right, padel ball, right.
Yes. And.
I have something to report on that when you're finished, so.
I believe there'll also be four of those courts at the complex in Snyder Park along with the 40 pickleball, there'll be four of those paddle courts.
All right, so.
Well, I have something even more to report on that, it's gonna make everybody happy.
Okay. All right, so we'll be able to elaborate a little bit more on the other reports. So, we did have that conversation. Also, we had a, I had my regular update meeting with city attorneys. Also, had a conversation, also again, with Matt Seko and his, his firm about the rock pick late that's affecting, or a conversation with District Three. So, that's a conversation we'll be, you know, going into more details about. Also, Thursday, the 25th was a busy, busy day, but we got a lot of.
Busy on those two days.
We also had a, a great meeting with the residents of Marrows Park neighborhood, discussing the lights, the streetlights for their community. We had a great outpour, great participation. The majority are still in favor of the lights. At our meeting, the city manager was there, Alan Dodd and staff. Ingrid was always, also there. I don't know Ingrid's last name, but she's one of our employees. She was multitasking everywhere. She was working the PowerPoint, working the microphone. So, thank you, thank you for coming out. And we also had representation from FPNL as well. But, again, the, the neighborhood, they're ready to move forward to receive their lights. We'll be having another conversation with them in regards to the type of lights and also strategically planning where those lights will be placed. On the 30th, Tuesday, the 30th, I had my meeting with city manager, discussed our District Three updates. Also, on February the 1st, had a great meeting with the Martin Luther King Committee. It was a debriefing meeting regarding the parade and the festival. Great feedback. They were really pleased overall with the support from the city and they're looking forward to working with the city in the future for next year's event. Giving great appreciation to Parks and Recs for all of those who came together to make sure that that event was another successful event, stellar event is what I like to say. Carl Williams, Nigeria, and Bobby and all of those, there's many more. But, overall, perfect job. Thank you for your help with that. Also, the same day, we met with the Six Trump Festival Committee, meeting with the chair, Ms. Henrietta Davis, preparing for the festival on Saturday, the 24th. That festival will, Six Trump Festival is including a 5K run that will start at 7:00 a.m. The parade itself begins at 8:30. The festival starts at 11:00 a.m. and it concludes at 8:00 p.m. On Friday, the 2nd, I attended the 16th Annual State of the County Forum at the Signature Grand. Great presentation, great information. They really highlighted this city of Fort Lauderdale. They pointed out some things that, I should say, highlighted some items that I've been advocating for from this seat regarding the 33311, talking about the childcare lack of and where we need to fill in that gap. Also, just talking about the opportunity for job and economic development in 33311. So, that was echoing what I've been seeing here on the dais. And I know we're all on one page and we're moving in a direction to make sure we change those, fill in those gaps. Also, on February the 3rd, which was Saturday, documentary that was prepared by Dr. Michelle Dallas, Crossing the Waters. It is a documentary telling the story about the Bahamian population that migrated from Bahamas to South Florida and the vast contributions that they have given to South Florida overall. I had the pleasure of presenting the key to the city, to the Honorable Perry Gladstone Christie. He was the first past Prime Minister for the Bahamas. And he has relatives here in the city, so a connection as well. We, great opportunity. This particular documentary has aired also through the Fort Lauderdale Film Festival. So, if you haven't seen it, make an opportunity to do so. It is a great presentation. Also, on, we'll stop there. All right, just advising and reminding that upcoming events, this Thursday, the 8th, Lake Air Civic Association will have their monthly meeting. On Monday, the 12th, I will be attending the Affordable Housing Advisory Board Meeting. On Thursday, the 15th, we will be able to experience the, a pop-up food market at Lincoln Park in the parking lot of the DSD Building, that 706 Trump Boulevard. Strides, excuse me, Strouts Food Bus is coming to the area where they are offering affordable, fresh fruits and vegetables to the neighbors. This is a great opportunity to be able to purchase those fresh items that are needed. And also, that's from 6 to, 3 to 6:00 p.m. And that even gives an opportunity for the neighbors to still come out and be a part of Neighborhood Support Night. Okay? So, I conclude there, thank you.
Thank you. It's a part-time job.
Yes, it's a part-time job.
Commissioner Glassman.
Thank you, Mayor. Wednesday, January 24th, thank you, Middle River Terrace Neighborhood Association for their meeting. The 29th, thank you, Lauderdale Beach Homeowners Association for your meeting. Excellent turnout, excellent discussion as always. Wednesday, January 31st, Mayor, you and I had the pleasure of meeting with the Board of Directors of Aimco, the development team redoing the Seerstown Corner. And all I'm gonna say about that is how refreshing to see these 25 people come to our city from around the, around the country to have their Board of Directors meeting because they wanted to look at the site. Some of these folks had not been here since the spring break days in the 60s and 70s. And Mayor, as you can well attest, the comments from these folks from around the nation, all of the things that they had to say about Fort Lauderdale were incredibly positive, uplifting. And it was really nice to listen to what they had to say about our city. That evening, History Makers, terrific program from History Fort Lauderdale, honoring Kelly Shanley, who is leaving his position at the Broward Center for the Performing Arts, also honoring the Galleria. What a really nice evening as well and paying tribute to folks that really are so deserving of that tribute. Friday, February 1, I want to thank Visit Lauderdale for inviting me to meet with social influencer and blogger, Ravi Roth, who travels around the world. He is specifically known for doing reports and videos on LGBTQ travel and luxury travel. We had a great chat. He was in town for a day and a half, I believe, to just work on this project for Visit Lauderdale. I met him at the La Sola Social Side Park. I want to again thank Visit Lauderdale for asking me to take the time to spend with him. Again, someone who has not been here, who just had amazing things to say about our city. Sunday, February 4th, due to the four tornado warnings, the Hendricks Isle, Isle of Venice Association, our newest neighborhood association in the city of Fort Lauderdale, had to postpone their annual meeting and picnic. But, we'll look forward to doing that again in a few weeks. Monday, February 5th, that was just last evening, what a very touching, touching ceremony at Stash. I want to thank Gina Ellis and Riverwalk and all of the supporters and friends and loved ones of Renee, Renee Quinn for turning out in such large numbers. It was really a beautiful, beautiful celebration of life. And that room was just so incredibly full of love for this woman who had contributed so much to our community. So, I wanted to say thank you for those that were involved in putting that celebration together. Tomorrow, Victoria Park Civic Association will be meeting. Thursday, we will be gathering with all of the presidents of District Two neighborhood associations. I love that roundtable. The input and the sharing of ideas is always tremendous. We look forward to that on the 8th. Also, that evening, the Riviera Isles Homeowners Association meeting will have their annual meeting, actually. I look forward to attending and speaking at that as well. Monday, February 12th, we're in for a big day, touring the Baptist Health Iceplex in Holiday Park. As most people know, the ice rink for the training facility for the Panthers has opened. But, this is going to be the preview of the ice rink for the community and I very much look forward to that as well. Thursday, February 15th, Neighbor Support Night. Again, that's always tremendous to see the community come together for that. Just a few comments, Mayor. Number one, and I, I know that I did receive an answer to this, we did lose a very significant tree at 2881 East Oakland Park Boulevard. Chris, I did see a reason why that was permitted, but I do have some questions about that because it said due to a project coming there. But, I thought that Coral Towers project was coming to the north of that Crescent, I think that's how you pronounce it, Office Building, not right at that site. And I want to make sure that we're right on that.
Where was this?
As you go over the Oakland Park Bridge, heading from east to west, it's on the right, just at the foot of the bridge. So, that would be the northwest corner of the bridge.
You're talking about the intercoastal bridge?
Yes, the Oakland Park Bridge. There was a tree there, I have posted photos of it on Facebook. I would say centuries old. It was really one of the most magnificent trees in the city. And it was, it was cut down. And I, I had heard that there were reasons such as the plumbing, the roots were hurting the plumbing under the building. But, Chris, are we sure that right on that site where that office, that office building's coming down?
So, that project, Chris Cooper, Development Service Director, that project was before DRC, it was withdrawn, but it looks like based on the stated reason for the applicant wanting to remove the tree that that project will be coming back in some way, shape, or form. However, you know, the code really doesn't distinguish between a tree removal permit for a parcel that has a pending development or a proposed development or any consideration of a future development. If a property owner wants to remove a tree on their property, there's a process for them to go through to apply for that tree removal permit. That includes the assessment of a mitigation, whether that's in the form of replanting more trees on the site or paying into the tree mitigation, or the Tree Preservation Trust Fund. So, while that was a reason stated by the applicant for wanting to remove the tree in terms of the potential future development, that property owner could have come in and applied for that removal regardless of the reason why.
With no reason at all.
Correct.
Well, you know, I know that later we're gonna be discussing the ordinance. We need to talk about this because there's no way that you could replace that tree, number one. And I wish, I should have brought some photos with me, but as I said, I did post them. But, I want to make sure, so are we still saying that a project did come to DSD to remove, to demolish that office building and build? Because I'm pretty sure that the project we're talking about, that you're talking about, is to the north of the office building where those parking lots are. That's where I think there's a proposed development. Nowhere near that tree or that office building. I don't think that office building is coming down.
So, I think the original project was at the property next door, but I think the indication we have is that the future project may include that parcel. And I don't, I don't know for sure. That was what the applicant proposed in their letter to us when they applied for the tree removal permit. So, I'm basing it off of that information.
Yeah, that's a real shame. That's a real shame.
Well, the tree's down.
I understand, but I just want to make sure, why? Because I, again, that proposed development project is not where this tree was. It's not. And it's not where that office building is. That office building is pretty close to the bridge and the project that you're talking about is to the north behind the building where there are some parking lots. And they sold off some of those parking lots for that office building for that exact project. But, I just think we need to revisit this. I need to figure out why is it okay to just destroy a centuries-old tree? Because with no reason at all. And if you're gonna contribute, how much did they contribute to the tree fund?
$31,400, somewhere in that, in that neighborhood. So, you know, we are working on a update to our landscape code and the part that we're gonna hopefully bring back to you all very soon after we go to the Planning and Zoning Board focuses on the process for permitting tree removal. So, things like what that mitigation cost could look like or what the number of trees to reinstall based on the size and condition of a tree that's proposed to be removed, it hasn't been updated in a very long time. So, looking at those decision points that somebody, a property owner, will need to look at to consider either removing a tree or keeping a tree, looking at ways to both maybe disincentivize it by, by the mitigation requirements that's related to the value of the tree. It's not anything that's not, you know, there's not a nexus to that. But, also, in the future, looking at how we can incentivize owners to, to keep trees on their property.
And what about, I know that we have designated certain trees, like I believe the rain tree was designated. Is there, I think we should start an effort to perhaps look at our heritage trees and look at protecting them, just like we would want to protect historic resources. look at protecting them, just like we would want to protect historic resources and, you know, actual buildings.
Yeah, I think rain tree might be the only one that has a commission resolution protecting it, but I'm not totally sure about that.
Maybe we need to, maybe we need to somehow survey the city, and now I'm not talking about every single tree, but there are some trees that just stand out. This was one of them. So, I'm not going to beat a dead horse here, as you said, Mayor, the tree is gone, but I think we need to really think about protecting heritage trees that are just not common in our city.
So you have an item later tonight on your agenda for the tree canopy master plan? I'm not, maybe not be getting that phrasing completely right, but I think that may be some of the conversation as part of developing that plan, is how we, how we look at our tree canopy, what we need to do to improve our tree canopy and maintain the tree canopy.
And heritage trees. Okay, thank you. Thank you for that. Second item, again, I want to pass along, as did the Vice Mayor, some thank yous to Parks and Rec, Carl and staff. I have been hearing repeated thank yous from all the folks that play pickleball in Holiday Park and George English Park. They're absolutely thrilled with the improvements to those facilities, and for the city listening to them, for the needs that they have in both of those facilities. So I want to pass along those many thank yous, because I'm sure that they don't filter down to you on a daily basis. Three, City Manager, I received complaints about the VCA Walk for the Animals. This is the second year in a row that I've received these complaints. I did talk about the last time. We just cannot, we cannot disrupt residents at 7:30 in the morning on a Saturday with loud music, bass, blaring bass, loudspeakers, announcements. It's just too early. I think it's just too inconsiderate to the neighbors, and I really want us to look, look ahead when these kinds of applications come to us. Also, some of the road closures in that area with La Sola Circle, which has already gone through so many road closures, I just want us to take a little bit more of a look at this and think about what we're doing to the residents.
Yeah, we will certainly look at that. In fact, Carl and, and the reviewers are going to make sure that no noise, not even for warm-up, is allowed prior to 8:00 AM. Also want to update that we're in the process of recruiting for the bid-sponsored position, which will make sure that concerns such as this, or even the logistics planning of anything in the barrier island that takes place, that they consider all of these concerns so that there's no issues when things roll out.
Excellent. I think that all makes sense, and I'm happy to hear that that is absolutely happening. Last but not least, we did have that conversation about the Governor's proposals for the homeless initiative, but I really want to make sure we stay on top of that. As I mentioned before, this is the number one email complaint that I received from many neighborhoods in District 2. Again, some of the people that folks encounter on a regular basis are the same people that congregate in the same place. I know that we're working on the medians, and we're working on that safety aspect and tweaking that ordinance, which is great, but I hear this all the time. I'm happy to hear that the gentleman on 17th Street is getting help. I received some emails, some very nice emails, some that I thought were a little over the top and nasty, but that's okay. But the important thing is that we are offering services. And to the folks that write the nasty emails about why we're not doing anything, that's just not true. We are doing so much, and I commend staff for what we're doing, but you cannot force a person to take help. You cannot force a human being to accept the services that we offer. You can try and try and try and try. I'm happy that we are, correct me if I'm wrong, we were finally successful with that gentleman on 17th Street in getting him the services that we've been trying to get him for quite a long time.
Yeah, kudos to Luisa and Chief Schultz and his staff. They persistently worked with the gentleman, he was able to get the support he needed and move along.
Yes, and thank you. And again, I would just say to people that just have a penchant for writing just such rude emails, disrespectful emails to us, accusing us of so many things that just don't make sense, and they're not true. People need to either pay attention to what we're doing, or read what we're pulling out there in terms of all of the work that our city's doing with regards to homeless, and I know that we are going to continue that amazing work. Last but not least, on this topic...
I thought last, that was last but not least.
Well, no.
Yeah, you didn't say last but not least.
Mayor, this is part of that topic, I'm sorry. So, actually, I have been asked by several people, City Manager, has anyone on this day has been actually appointed as the point person with regards to homelessness, someone in charge of everything to do with homelessness? I've, I've been asked this question from folks that recently attended a Neighborhood Association meeting, and they were told that that is actually the case, and a big surprise announcement is coming, but to the best of my knowledge, I answered to them, and I say, "No, I'm not aware of any of us being appointed as the point person on anything to do with homelessness." Is that...
Well, we have, the Vice Mayor is the person who's our representative on the...
Exactly.
Continuum of Care.
Yes, no, that I understand, but that was, yes, that I understand, and I'm grateful for that, but that's not what was presented to me.
What are you asking?
So, I'm just wondering, has anyone else been assigned to that?
No, we have, as the Vice Mayor said, Continuum of Care Board, which we appreciate because we, we need those services to come through, but other than that...
Other than that, nothing.
There's the, the Homeless Advisory Board, that staff liaisons with members of the community, but other than that, we do not have any other...
Okay, thank you.
That we know of.
Glad for that clarification. That's the answer that I'll give back to people that are asking me. And lastly, but not least, of course, I'm sorry, Mayor, but February, well, no one's mentioned it, but February is Black History Month, and I want to know, I want to just say that, that it is so vital to our schoolchildren that they learn this history, the good, the bad, and the ugly, and I want to always make sure that we are supporting every effort that comes our way, and also working with the school board. Thank you, Mayor, I know that you're impatient to move on, so that's it for me, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Sturman.
Be happy to know I have three very brief announcements, and that's it. Number one, we are going to be having a, another one of our monthly Town Hall meetings, that's going to be this coming Tuesday, February 13th, Hardy Park at the Southside School. This one's going to be focusing on the noise ordinance, so I encourage everybody to show up. We'll have presentation, questions, input from the community that we'll bring back. That's going to be Tuesday, February 13th, correct, at Southside School. Number two, we're going to be having another workshop, so there's going to be two of them this month, at the end of this month. This is, it's funny that you should bring up the tree ordinance, we had already set with staff a public outreach with the community, and a tree ordinance is going to be, we don't have a date set yet, correct? But it will be at the end of this month in District 4, everybody is invited. And number three, we are starting a monthly bike with the Commissioner. If I could stay upright, I will be biking with the community, it's going to be a week from this Saturday. It starts at, at 10 o'clock on February 17th. Location, the park, the starting spot and the destination spot have not been determined, but keep an eye out, we will have a announcement going out the 17th, starting at 10:00 AM, correct? And, yeah? Correct?
10 or 11. 10 or 11.
10 or 11. Plan on 9, I'll get there at 10. And the last thing, the Mayor did mention Groundhog Day, and they did say about a week earlier at the, at the State of the Counties Breakfast, that they were hoping that the groundhog would see his shadow so we'd have six more weeks of tourist season, but I guess...
No, if he sees his shadow, he's scared, he runs back in the ground.
And he sees his shadow, no, 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 correct, I'm saying it correctly, he sees his shadow, we have six more weeks of winter, i.e. six more weeks of tourist season.
Oh, I see. Unfortunately, the winter, the winter is...
Winter's going to be a little shorter, and our, and our tourist season is not going to be quite as long. Okay, Mr. Mayor, that is the end of my report.
Okay, thank you. All right, let me just go through these, a few things I want to point out to the community. We had another, opening of another hotel here in Fort Lauderdale, this is near the airport, in Aloft in Fort Lauderdale. Commissioner Sturman and I were both there doing the ribbon cutting. The following day, we did the tree planting for Tupushvat over in the Gore, the former Gore Nursery, now is Gore, the Gore Park, and another important event to connect to all the communities that, that we, we call Fort Lauderdale. Let's see. I was a master of ceremonies for the Change of Command at the Coral Ridge Yacht Club on January 28th. Very, very nice event, well-attended by the community in the Coral Ridge Yacht Club area, and it was really a nice event. I was flattered to be asked to participate in that. January 31st, I participated, or attended and participated at, in Miami, the country of Dubai was holding a economic investment conference, and people from all over the South Florida regional, region participated, all about, talking about economic investment. I got there about 10 minutes late because of traffic, and then when I walked in the room, the conversation was Dubai, Miami, Dubai, Miami. When I sat down, they said, "Oh, the Mayor of Fort Lauderdale's here, so let's just talk about South Florida." So, literally, walking in the room changed the conversation. So, I was very happy to see that. History Makers, let's see, February 1st, was it mentioned about Invest, the Greater Fort Lauderdale launch of Invest, Invest Magazine, Greater Fort Lauderdale Launch? It was a very well-attended event, very happy that we were able to participate in that. Let's see. I was asked to participate in a roundtable with other mayors, about a dozen other mayors participated with the school board that was convened by the, the new superintendent, kind of to hear from mayors around the county about next steps in redefining the school. Didn't really hear anything that was novel or earth-shattering, but at least it began a conversation, and it allowed me to be introduced to the new superintendent who's, who represents the school district. That same day, February 2nd, we did the, the grand opening of the Saint Demetrius Greek Festival, and it was amazing success, the biggest I've ever seen since I've lived here. And that evening, I also went and participated in the Frank Ordus, Mayor Frank Ordus of Pembroke Pines is now retiring, their election is in next month, and it was a wonderful retirement party, very elegant affair, and Frank has been around for a very long time. I believe he's been in public service for 28 years, and he's the Chair of the MPO, so he'll be stepping down as that when he retires. Also spoke at the Canada Florida Chamber of Commerce a couple of days ago, February 5th. Just another opportunity to connect with our Canadian citizens, investors, and tourists, talk about best practices in trying to encourage more investment and economic growth with our Canadian friends. On Fri-, is it Friday, February 8th? Yes, no, Thursday, February 8th, I'll be attending the Chamber of Event honoring Jack Seiler, who is concluding his year as Chair of the Greater Fort Lauderdale Chamber of Commerce. That's going to begin at 5:15, it starts at the Elbow Room, of course, and it will, I think there's a bar crawl, so for those of you who wish to attend, again, it's February 8th, starting at 5:15 at the Elbow Room. The following day, Friday, I'll be attending with others, hopefully here at the Broward Center, is a farewell event honoring Kelly Shanley, who has been the, the CEO and President of the Broward Center for a number of years, and has certainly brought this center to a level that I think we can all be very proud of. On the 10th, I'll be doing, kicking off the Children's Parade at the Saint Jerome Annual Carnival, that's at 6:00 PM at the church, and then on February 12th, we'll be doing the launch event for the ice skating rinks, which Commissioner Glassman spoke about, that's at 4:00 PM, hopefully everyone from the Commission can participate. Let me skip, 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 skip. Chamber of Commerce is having their annual luncheon meeting at the Signature Grand on February 15th, hopefully all of us could attend that. Again, that's February 15th at the Signature Grand. And I guess that's it for events. So let me just talk about a couple of quick things. So, we've seen some angel investors, or some angel philanthropists, I should say, in our community who have spent considerable amounts of money to enhance the quality of life here in our city. Examples of that are the Panther Organization that has built those wonderful ice skating rinks, which we're going to see in a few days, as well as their investment in rehabilitating the War Memorial Auditorium. These are things that the city could never have afforded, and it's so, we're very lucky to have people like that in our community who see how important it is to invest in families and children in our, in our, in our neighborhoods. In addition, we also see that the, the folks that have invested in producing the pickleball courts, which we mentioned earlier, and the pickleball stadium, which I understand is now going to be part of that site plan, and also, of course, not, not the least of which is the Inter Miami Stadium, which, over $170 million investment in our community, one which I think will, is a testament to philanthropy here in our, in our city. So someone's now approached me about doing indoor tennis courts, pickleball courts, and Pet, Pedel Bar?
Pedal.
Whatever, courts. And, and I want to emphasize the word indoor. He is prepared to fund an entire project, completely indoors, and, and asked what the opportunities would be in the city of Fort Lauderdale. Needless to say, I can't speak for the city without the Commission's approval, but he mentioned a few things. He mentioned Mills Pond Park, he mentioned, even that, you remember the, the Community Center, John, didn't they want to build pickleball courts or something on, in that structure? What was, what was the talk there? What, how did it conclude?
So, right, thought at, at the Community Center was that they were going to build a roof over the existing parking, and then one of the suggestions was to do pickleball on the roof. As you can imagine, because that's kind of a canyon, you've got condos on the end and on the sides, the, the neighbors there were adamantly opposed to that. One of the individuals who's on the North Beach Merchants Association was advocating strongly for the pickleball courts, but none of the residents there were in favor of it.
So if we did an indoor one?
You know, so, funny you should mention that. One of the things that came out of some of the discussions that we had is that potentially we take that site and build indoor pickleball courts, it's something that I've talked with the City Manager about. We're going to be having a series of workshops with the neighborhood out there, because you recall, that's where we had initially proposed doing the freestanding emergency room for Broward Health...
Right.
Which the neighborhood shot down. So now potentially, we can look at indoor pickleball courts over there, as long as we keep the parking. Yes, the one thing that the North Beach Merchants Association is adamant about is that we maintain the existing level of parking that we have in that neighborhood. So if we did an indoor pickleball court, we'd have to have parking up on the roof, so it would have to be at least a two, maybe three-story structure. So we have to look at that, see if that's what the neighborhood wants, and then see, you know, financially, if that's something we could do, if it's maybe a public-private partnership, that might be a way that we can work on that. I will also add, though, Mayor, I have heard, and I can confirm this, and maybe staff can, a rumor that the former Sound Advice location on Federal Highway, roughly around 46th Street, is, has been torn down and is going to be rebuilt as indoor pickleball courts.
There's no rumor, it's true.
Okay.
It's the same person who's, who's doing that, wants to do even more, but the problem with the Sound Advice site is that it's narrow, and the neighbors are going to be also upset with any height that wants to be put, put there, so that's what started the conversation. And I said, "Well, perhaps there's another opportunity for you, that we can, we can build this in partnership with the city," and, and so, I would like to be able to have that conversation, maybe bring that gentleman to a City Commission meeting and a conference meeting, and see what we can work out. Maybe I can talk with him preliminarily, but I know Mills Pond is, is a great park that we have, and we like the open space, but if we can, you know, take part of it and build a, an indoor structure, because let's face it, it's very difficult to play these sports outdoors as most, many of the months, especially because of the humidity, right? And as some of us get a little older, it becomes even more difficult, and it'd be great to have that opportunity to, to build maybe 10 tennis courts, maybe 20 pickleball courts, and even at Lockhart, you know, as we're designing the park, you know, is there an opportunity there? You had talked about putting pickleball...
So we're currently planning 16 pickleball courts at Lockhart, so I guess my question would be, if, if we brought in a private vendor, they would then construct the pickleball courts, relieving the city of the obligation to build those.
And the expense.
And the expense. I guess my only question would be, because we obviously anticipate that at, at being a lower no-cost amenity to the community, so I think, you know, certainly I'd be open to having that discussion, you know, as long as we're not taking any additional land at Lockhart that we've got, currently got programmed for the fields and the dog park and the splash pad for the kids, if we would take that existing site that we were looking at, again, 16 courts, which is, you know, a fair number of them, and then enclosing that and air conditioning it and, and everything else, certainly I'd be, I'd welcome the opportunity to have that conversation. We're getting ready to bring forward a 16... We're getting ready to bring forward a 60% design very shortly. So, if we're going to do that, it would behoove the, you know, the, the interested party to get on my calendar as quickly as possible. So, we can introduce them with AE Comm and talk about how we could do this.
So, so, you know, 16 courts, if you did eight courts on two floors, that opens up some of the land area, too. So, so this is an op-, I'm glad it's, I mean, I'm happy it's come up now before we do anything.
I agree.
And, and again, like I said, you know, I was thinking of all the different places where we still have open space, and, you know, certainly Lockhart, possibly Mills Pond, so...
The only thing we run into at Lockhart that we've got to be careful with is that's the FAA flight path for the airport. So, when we, and that was one of the things that was a discussion point when we were looking at the previous Community Center was under consideration for a two-story building. So, we have to look at the flight path. But again, I mean, conceptually, I'm not opposed to it, and I, I think we can have that discussion. So, bring them in. We can have, we can have AE Comm come in and meet with them and see, you know, how we can go about doing this.
Okay.
Happy to have that conversation.
All right.
Maybe we do 32 courts here, 16 on two levels. The more, the merrier.
Or, 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 or do some tennis as well. Mix it up, or padel.
Paddle. Mayor, what about all of the empty space at the Galleria Mall? It's already enclosed and built, and it's so much empty space in that building.
Well, this person doesn't own the Galleria Mall.
No, I know, but is that even a thought in the future? But maybe, just throwing it out there, there's just a ton of empty space in that structure, that's all.
Well, again, they have an approach just to do that.
I understand. I'm just throwing it out there.
I do believe that there's some people bidding on that property now, and some of which want to keep it as a mall, so I don't know.
I think right now, the only indoor pickleball is that facility, I think, Diadem out in Coconut Creek. I think that's the only one.
Okay. And just one quick thing, Vice Mayor, I, I attended a couple of weeks ago, the River Gardens, Sweden Estates Neighborhood Meeting, and there was, there was a question which you probably know more about than I do, on Sistrunk, then around 23rd Avenue, they said. They, they talked about lighting and the difficulty to cross the street there. Do you know, has that ever been brought up with you before? Do you know anything about this?
You're referring to traffic lights. A traffic light?
Light, no, lighting. Or maybe it was traffic lights, too.
It's traffic light. I have, I've had more conversations about traffic light, not street lights.
Okay.
Both at 24th, 23rd Avenue.
Right.
And then also, like, right at 15th, 19th Avenue.
Okay.
There was, the history was, there were lights there previous.
Before, okay.
And throughout the years, whatever the conversation was, those traffic lights were removed.
Okay.
And now with the increase of traffic, it's hazardous now for neighbors to be able to get onto Sistrunk, ingressing and egressing. So, it is a conversation that has been shared with me that we will have with Tam and others to see what we can do through Broward County.
Okay, all right, so it is on your radar. Very good. All right, and that concludes my comments. City Manager, do you have a report?
Yes, I have a few updates. So, going into the discussion that you had about the Broward County Public Schools, letting the public know that redefining Broward County Public Schools is a community input initiative by the new superintendent. They're going to have a series of meetings, but the next meeting is going to happen on Thursday, February 8th at 6:00 PM in Fort Lauderdale High School, and we hope the community members show up and provide their input as well for future strategy. Dottie Mancini Park, just wanted to provide an update that we continue our dialogue with the leadership at Broward Health. A proposal was sent two weeks ago and into, to enter into a monthly lease agreement for up to a year. As you all know, I have the authority to lease for up to a year, and that will at least allow us to reopen the park promptly and thereafter, look at long-term solutions, whether it's to procure or find another land space for Broward Health. But certainly, that would be a short-term endeavor. But yesterday, we received an update from their leadership staff, and their attorneys are reviewing and finalizing, so our attorneys can finalize it so that I can execute and enter into a contract for less than a year. Additionally, I've been asked to speak at the DDA to talk about the Reimagine City Hall efforts. Also wanted to remind everyone that the next Reimagine City Hall workshop will be on February 17th from 9:00 to 11:00 AM at Holiday Park Social Center. I'm also, I've also been asked to be a panelist at a Water Infrastructure Challenges Seminar on February 12th in Miami to talk about forever chemicals, aging water infrastructure, and more. Want to also alert the community that our partners are, at Circuit, are hiring drivers for our Lauter Go, so they're also going to be present...
A bartender?
...at the Neighbor Support Night, and the requirements are that the individual must be 21-plus, valed license, good personality, and knowledge of the local roads. We also are looking forward to having a federal legislative workshop. We've set the next meeting to be February 20th. However, I want to make sure that we're inclusive of everyone's schedule. Wanted to make sure if we can accommodate 12:15, if that's okay with everyone. 12:15 on February 20th. We had previously said 11:30 AM, but wanted to ask if you're all okay with 12:15. Our federal lobbyists will be present.
We have a commission meeting that's...
Exactly. So, we would transition into the conference meeting. And last, March 1st is Employee Appreciation Day at an international level, and we will have employee appreciation lunch in City Hall for second year in a row, and we're very excited about that. It's a way to pay tribute and thank our staff that keeps this city shining. Thank you very much.
Okay. Anything further from the Commission? So, it's a little bit after 6:00. I apologize to everybody that the evening meeting was supposed to start at 6:00 PM. We're going to take a 20-minute break, and we'll try to be back here by 6:30.